I will call our Blackstone Millville Regional School District's school committee meeting to order for December 14th. If we could stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. All right, introduction of members.
Ken Novio, Millville.
Carrie Godditt, Blackstone.
Dan Keefe, Blackstone.
Matt Catalano, Millville.
Chuck Dunton, Blackstone.
Tara Scobie, Blackstone.
Tara Larkin, Millville.
Erin Vinaco, Millville.
Jill Tella-Gallaroni, Assistant Superintendent, Director of Student Services.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you so much. And we do have our Millville Board of Selectmen here, so I'm going to have them call their meeting to order real quick.
Thank you. We'll call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 6:04 PM on December 14th.
Thank you. And if our student reps do join us, we'll circle back to them. Consent Agenda A, we have warrants, minutes of meeting for November 2nd. Looking for a motion for consent Agenda A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Carrie, second by Dan. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor of consent Agenda A?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Too unanimous, thank you. And next up, we have public forums. I believe most of you are here, that are here are already on our agenda, but if there's anyone that wanted to address us during our meeting, now is the time. All right. And moving on to school committee. First, we have staff recognition, which I'm going to let Dr. DeFalco introduce to us.
Great, thanks. Good evening, everybody. Nice to have a full house, at least for the first part of the meeting. And so first, we want to take just a brief moment and recognize two of our staff members. This fall, actually every fall, the school districts in the Blackstone Valley come together and honor and recognize two, one or two teachers from their district. There are 13 of us that are in the consortium for their innovation in the classroom and the time, effort, and energy that they put into our students. And we bring everybody together for a really nice breakfast, and it's called a Promising Practices event. And each teacher from each district, or each teacher, set of teachers, take a few minutes and present their lesson, or their project, or topic to educators from across the Blackstone Valley. It's one of the best events, honestly, that we do. And it's an honor for me to share tonight our two recipients. So if you actually wouldn't mind coming down, we are going to embarrass and publicly recognize our two Promising Practices recipients for this year, Megan Murray and Grace Merton. They are both from the complex. I have a certificate for each of you.
Thank you.
And then, Erin, you want to come around? And I'll put you in the hot seat, literally, if you want to sit up front and then share with the group a little bit about your project and the work that you're doing with our student instructional leadership team. So do you want to take this seat and say a few words?
Don't worry, Mom's here. She's here. This is home. So Megan and I are both 4th grade teachers. I'm a regular teacher. Megan is a special ed teacher. Not to speak for you, but to introduce ourselves a little. And we're both the leaders, I guess, or facilitators of the student instructional leadership team. And pretty much, I guess, the way that it started was, we're both instructional leadership team members, and we had talked about getting the students involved in attending a few of the meetings. And it sort of morphed into, why are we not just having them create their own instructional leadership team? Because we wanted them involved in so many things that it just made sense to have our own group, and then to have two people facilitate and bring the ideas back to the regular team. And then we took advice from other teachers and had kids who weren't necessarily otherwise recognized in the school join the team, and they are like enthralled with it. They are so excited to be involved in the school. They're so excited to provide their feedback. And it just sort of like snowballed, I guess. All of a sudden, it's this big thing, and the kids are so involved in providing feedback on every school event. It does not matter what event, they want to tell you how we can be better. And it's awesome to get them involved in data, which I can, I guess, let you speak to.
Yeah. So what we actually got the Promising Practices award for was our, we presented them with a case study about chocolate bars and how they're being sold. And we talked about fundraisers in our school and what we can do to make them more equitable or fair for all the kids to participate. People were pretty upset about the awards or prizes, like who got them first in it. So we worked with that on that. And then we went to the RPTO, or PPO, and we talked with them, and they were able to make some changes, too. So we're just working together with everyone. And then we did look at data, like Ms. Merton was saying. We looked at MCAS data from last year, and they were able to compare it and look at the rubrics and writing.
Yeah, it's just, it's been really great. I think, you know, both the students and the staff now have a better understanding of each other. And we always joke, like Megan and I are so young, they just throw ideas out there. They're so comfortable, which has just made the setting so incredible. It started as just Megan and I were going to facilitate the first meeting, and then, you know, pass the reins to someone else, and it just, it just stuck. The kids are so willing to provide feedback on everything. The chocolate bar case study was just the, you know, the tip of the iceberg. We talked about how some students can't afford to participate in activities like the move-a-thon. And then when they pass out awards, they feel sad that they can't. And, you know, they came up with such, like, deep feedback about, like, what if their parents are working three jobs? What, you know, all, like, things that you would never expect nine and 10-year-olds to provide, they came up with. And then again, it just, it went into data, and they were like, well, why do you ask us those questions? And we explained it to them. They're like, oh, that makes sense. Maybe you could teach it this way instead. Like, it's just, the conversation has been so great, and it is like their favorite part of the day.
Ours, too.
You can, yeah. We had a student in the hallway, and I was walking by, and just jokingly, I was like, are you causing problems? And he was like, no, no, I am on student I L T. I would never cause problems. And they shared that it's their favorite part of the day, and they just love being a part of the school in the leadership role that they like, has never happened before. They like feel so strongly about it.
And I think you recently highlighted in a video, short video, that actually went national. It went across school districts from coast to coast. So congratulations. You both did a great job on that.
Thank you.
I think you're done in the hot seat. And in your packets is a two-page overview of what was in the Promising Practices booklet that went out at the event. So when you have a moment, you'll use that and get a little bit of a deeper sense of what the student instructional leadership team is all about. So thanks again to Megan and Grace.
Thank you. All right. And now, we obviously have a room full of athletes tonight, which is very nice to see. We have our volleyball coach and team members. They're hiding over in the corner. If you want to join us first, I'm only going in order of the way it's on our agenda. We have volleyball and football here. Yes, come up as a group.
I think some are nervous.
You don't have to talk, but you can come over here, just to be part of the group. I will let, I will let you introduce the team members that are here, if you don't mind.
Okay, so we have Julie Kudarka, Senior Captain. We have Katie Taska. I knew that. I was going to pull a Tony. She's a junior. Abby is a sophomore. Abby Locke. And Maya Gangney is a sophomore. That's all we have today, unfortunately.
Thank you for coming out. So correct me if I'm wrong, I have your record as 17 and 6?
Yes.
17 and 6. And you are also the Central Mass champs for your division.
Yes.
So have, were any of you on the team a few years ago when you were in that status? You have a jacket?
Yeah.
So anyone that doesn't have a jacket, we do award jackets for the CMADA, you know, state final. And that is a gift from the school committee. So we're always happy to give those out. If you already have a jacket, I believe it's a patch?
Yes. Yep.
To put on the jacket. So any other teammate that already has a jacket, probably the seniors would earn their patch from us, too. So we're always excited to distribute those. And will the athletic director order them?
Yes. We'll get, we'll get the sizes and how many jackets and how many patches, and we'll take care of all that.
We also have a fun little certificate for you. That actually Dr. DeFalco made. See the picture? You can share with your team.
I'll take a picture, put it in our, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next up, we have our football team. Definitely want you all to come up. And I believe we have two coaches, right? Greg, and if you could introduce the other coach for us.
Coach Cap.
All right, Coach Cap. Coach Greg, please come up and introduce your team to us.
Hey, yes, all you mugs come up here.
If you want to share your record and all of the exciting things from the season, it would be great to have a highlight for all of you here.
Sure. Our record this year was 9 and 2. We ended up securing the Dual Valley Conference for the first time, I believe, in school history, and had, I believe, what was the first playoff victory at home in a thrilling double overtime win. So these guys are awesome, a pleasure to coach, and they deserve all the accolades and all the recognition they can get.
Yes. We are very proud of them.
We got most of them.
Got a couple faces.
Yeah, got a couple faces. Yeah, we have two, it looks like three of our captains were able to make it. Shawnee is a junior captain. You got Ziggy, he's a senior. Dustin's another captain, they were with there last season with us. We've got senior Eli Vernon. We have junior Jeff Moulton. We got sophomore Dylan Balcom. We got Kenny Marvell, senior. I call him Boss. He's a sophomore. We got Gabe Bandy, senior. Donovan's, new guy came in this year, which is nice to have. Big guy coming in, sophomore, right, Donnie? Yep. We've got Chap here, Noah Chapman, one of our chaps. He's a junior. I got Ziggy already. Eli, I got a senior. We got junior over here in Novio, Baby G. We got Shunny right here, he's a junior. We got our second chap, soft, excuse me, junior, I apologize. We have another senior over here in John Douglas. Behind him is freshman Frazier. And behind him, hiding behind the pole, come on, Bandy, stick your head out there, Bandy. That's the other Bandy, he's a junior, right? Junior? And then in the back, we've got John Williams, new guy, came in late, so we had a lot of late additions coming to help the team out. Unbelievable season to get where we were. We were totally overlooked. No one thought we were going to do anything. And then we were able to came in, come in and, you know, beaten it up twice in a row. We ended up beating St. Bernard's for the first time since I played them. They've crushed us every season. They have won the DVC, I don't know how many times, I probably have to say half a dozen times. And then Sutton, came in with Sutton, and on Thanksgiving Day to seal it up. That came down to that game, that's why the game was so important. We came out, and we have the DVC Offensive Player of the Year, and Dan Lawton was third in the state in rushing. He had, I believe, about 1,700 yards, I believe it was.
1,845.
Was it? 1,845. So he was a DVC rushing, rushing, and also, let's see, DVC Offensive Player of the Year. We also had the DVC Defensive Player of the Year in Dustin Convalin, which is a heck of, heck of an accomplishment. We also had two DVC All-Stars in Sean Haines and Jeff Moulton, which was awesome, so.
Yeah, that's a lot. You covered it all.
Well done.
Great. I mean, yeah. Very, very exciting season. It was exciting to read about it every weekend and even attend a few games. And I know you guys have been through a lot as a team, and we are extremely proud of you for your record, for your stature through this season, and it will always be remembered how strong you guys have been.
Sure.
We also have a certificate for you. For DVC champs.
Oh, cool. Thank you. Awesome job.
I also just want to add that it's so nice to see all of you in your jackets. I love that the boosters get those for you.
They're beautiful.
I think it's, what, after a few years, Greg? They get their, they earn their jacket?
Yeah, so in order to get their jacket, you have to play for three years, and the booster provides your jacket. Came in late, then you had an option to purchase your own jacket.
Okay.
But all these guys go with us for three years.
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's great school spirit. I honestly appreciate the boosters. I know Mary Beth is here. So it's, it's one of our biggest boosters in the school, and that also doesn't go unnoticed.
Hopefully, we can see all you guys at the banner, at the banner raising at the school.
Oh, 100%. I heard.
Banner comes in. I know we had a tentative date for that. I don't know if the banner's going to be here in time, but we're hoping to make a big deal out of it, of the school.
Of course.
So it'd be awesome if you guys could make it. You're pretty good.
Yes.
Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Congrats, thank you.
All right. Moving on, Millville, please join us. Pull up chairs, and everyone can sit in front of the, in front of.
It's a tough act to follow.
Peter, you have... You're not quite as tall.
No.
You have a presentation for us.
I do, yes.
You want to start with something else? I'll let you kind of...
No, I'll start with the presentation.
Peter's going to pick it off, yeah.
Yep, no, I appreciate it. Dr. Gulick prepared the presentation, but he couldn't be here. He was committed to speak at a water association meeting about manganese control or some such thing. So you're going to get the layman's version of a presentation. And let's see if I know how to do this. So basically, and you have copies of the slides, and there are 10 slides here. I don't want it to take too long. I'll get you through it quickly, I promise. But the key stat, you know, the manganese and the iron control is working excellent, and that's principally the challenge of the water system treatment. The disinfection byproducts, HAA5, as you see there, and TTHM, levels are good of late, okay? And we'll get to a slide that shows some details. There was some high iron and some high TOC, and, but they, what the, you'll see a slide briefly that shows that the operators responded quickly and controlled it, so they tested beautifully after that. The water demand, as you know, is very low. The system was designed for, I think, up to 8,500 gallons a day. So that actually made it a little more challenging to really get control of things. And in the beginning, the team, the operating team, was running water, and they were assisted by folks at the school, just trying to keep the demand up and keep things flowing through the system. But then they decided, but in the, towards the end of September, early October, remote monitoring capability was provided. And so they were able to watch the, you know, Dr. Gulick was able to monitor things and react more quickly to need, and so went to just letting meet the demand of the building at the time. There is now a plan, and we're looking for, we're looking for quotes now, on, and remote operation onsite of the plant. And that would be, they call them PLCs, programmable logic controllers, which are fairly simple, and they'll manage the chlorine levels based on output. Big shout out to the team at, at the school, and in particular, Scott, Matt, and Denise were very helpful, especially in the early stages of running water and keeping things going, and also giving heads up when things went awry. There was some color going on in October, but that was identified and repaired quickly. And they did change, as I say, change the green sand filter strategy in October to just run with the demand. We had a commitment back in early August from McClure Engineering to become the engineer, but they were very busy, so they couldn't sign up until basically the beginning of December, and they now have, and they're our official engineer. And you need an operator and engineer resource. So I'll move the slide along. I just wanted to put this slide up, which you may have seen. I won't get into too much detail on this, but that's the treatment system. And basically, what you have is a thousand-foot-deep well. The water is pumped up from a pump that's down 450 feet deep. It's brought in to remove sediment in a bag filter, and then it gets into the green sand filter, and you'll see it to the side. There's the add the chlorine, and there's monitor the output of the chlorine. So that's really where the magic happens. That's the key magic that happens to keep the water under control. And then that water then goes into the large tank that's outside, and the level of that is varied depending on what the operator thinks is the right level. I think right now, it's between 3,000 and 5,000 gallons, but it can hold up to 10,500 gallons. Then it goes to a pressure tank, and then it's disinfected. So when, when a faucet's turned on, it goes to a pressure tank, and then it goes through the pipe through a UV disinfection. The chlorine is not used as a disinfection. Ultraviolet lighting is, okay? And so it's zapped with the ultraviolet lighting, removes any gremlins that might be there. Then there's what's called corrosion control, which is pretty critical, actually, if there's lead or there's copper issues with the water. And decades ago, there was high lead content in the water, I guess, that, or in the system that has since been, has not been a problem. But what it is, is basically three types of chemicals that are put into the waters at that point, and then this finished water goes to the building and for use. And so I'm going to talk about the green sand filter a little bit later, in terms of what I described, for my best term of it, is an event. If you recall, back in January, February timeframe, the green sand filter medium, media had to be replaced, and you had also seen some very ugly water, you know, brown water and all sorts of stuff going on. That was, when the new medium, media was put in, it needed to be jump-started, and so it needed a very high dose of chlorine at that point. And you'll see that in a little table I'm going to get to. This next slide, I think, is very important to keep in mind. It really talks about the, how good the water really is in terms of various things like bacteria. It's always testing well for these types of things. Bacteria, lead and copper, synthetic organic chemicals, volatile organic chemicals, those types of things. Volatile organic chemicals would be if someone had put, you know, gasoline into the groundwater and it got into you. Those are ugly things that you don't want to see. Heavy metals, you don't want to see. Those are very severe health effects. PFAS, we'll talk a little bit about that. You don't have problems with radiological substances, nitrite and nitrates, pesticides, algae, and taste and color. So that, that's a good thing, you know, in terms of the water, but still, we've had the challenges of the disinfection byproducts. Now we're going to talk about those, and some color issues with manganese breakthrough, okay? And if you have questions, give me a holler. Here, I just want to show you, as I said, that chlorine, the magic where that happens in the system is to remove any manganese and iron. And the manganese and iron varies, and you've got to be able to react to that with the amount of chlorine you're squirting the system with, if you will. Okay? And that's, again, I'm a layman. But you can see, if you look on the left one, it's talking about manganese, which really is the one that gives you the brown water, right? You see a very high blue triangle on the left around about February 23? That's where that event happened, okay? And then you'll see that after that event, after the green sand media was adjusted, the orange dots are the, are the manganese levels, and the blue triangles are the levels that have now come through the system. So they, they're well below any levels that are required by MAST DEP. And that's been since, basically, once that green sand media was, was replaced, it's been testing beautifully for manganese. Likewise, on the iron, you'll see a very high dot towards the, right there, and it shows new green, green sand filter media going in. That's the event that I talked about. And again, since then, the iron has been under, well under control. And on this next slide, all this really is, I want to show you, in the highlighted over there to the right, you see a 30 on 1113. That's a high level of iron that's coming into the system, but the number to the right is what comes out of the system, which basically, it's removed. It's been removed by the filtration successfully, okay? Likewise, on 124, high level, removed successfully, well below any levels that are required. On the next slide, this is really the key stuff. This is your disinfection byproducts, okay? And if you may know, you may recall, it's monitored monthly for one test site and quarterly for another test site, both for, in this slide, haloacetic acids. And that's the one that, over the years, there have been, I'm going to say, eight or nine notices that have had to go out since 2016 or 17. And that's the one that's challenged, has been frustrating. Notices went out this first quarter of this year, and there will be notices that will go out in the first quarter next, you know, in '24. Those notices are a result of averaging, quarterly averaging. So what they do is they take the average of the quarter, and they average those quarters' averages, okay? And so the problem is, if you look in February, huge number, really skewed the quarterly averaging. That's why we've had to have the notices and expect to have notices going up. That's during the event, and that's when that new media was shocked, I'll call it, and really jump-started, and they had to put a ton of chlorine in, and they tested at the, sort of, close to the time they did that, and boom, we got that result. If you look in what's highlighted, basically since July, all of those test results for haloacetic acids are below the 60 parts per million that is the level, the MCL minimum, maximum contaminant level that MAST DEP has. So it's been under control, all right? And just remind, so, and it's averaged 30 parts per billion, so half of the maximum contaminant level for the six months, July through December. I'll also point out the health effects that we've talked about before. It's based on long-term consumption, and it's essentially, a half a gallon a day for 70 years straight is what the health effects are that MAST DEP is measuring things against. Just keep that in mind, all right? On the next slide is the most recent one that was new to us, total, and you, total trihalomethanes. And that's a mouthful, hard to say, especially if your mouth is dry, which mine is, okay? If I was smart, I might have brought water, but I didn't. But in any event, we got bumped on that. We saw that went up in September. You see that big number there? And there were also bigger numbers earlier in the year. Again, you look at February, that was the biggest number. That's during the event, as I've called it, right? Once we got the remote monitoring in, we were able to keep on top of things. And so since October, November, December, we've been well below the MCL maximum contaminant level of 80 parts per billion, right? And on the average, as this says, from August through December, it's been at 50 parts per, 72 parts per billion for August through September. October through December is at 50, okay? So we're, it's under control, is what this shows in most recent months, and the big factor has been remote monitoring, and soon we'll have the remote, the automatic control, okay? Here, this talks a little bit about the upcoming note, you know, the notice process and what will happen. And as we, as we expect, we will have to provide notices sent out to the list that has been provided by the superintendent's office for both the, both disinfection byproducts, the haloacetic acids and the total trihalomethanes, and that's due to averaging. The table on the right, which is in blue, shows you the Q4 results for the, and the DBP1 and DBP2 are the two different test sites, right? One, the first one is done monthly, the second one is done quarterly, if you remember back those other slides. In order for the first quarter to, to not create based on averaging, to have a notice to go out in April, okay? You follow me? We'll have to see an average below 73 for the, of the HAA5s and below 110, and you can see what the results were for the fourth quarter in both those locations, which are well below that average. Likewise, on the total trihalomethanes, DBP1, for example, averaged 50 in the quarter. For quarter one, it has to average 57 or less. Follow me? In order to avoid a notice for the first quarter going out in April. Follow me? It's very complicated, I know, okay? It's very complicated, I know, okay? And I can go back to any slides as you wish on this. That's the DBP thing. That's the challenges that we've had to face, those ugly notices. They're scary when you get them, I know that. And I hate to see them, you all hate to see them. I put a slide up here for PFAS because we're going to have to be dealing with that at some point in the future, okay? And this just shows that the water has been, the contaminant level is 20 parts per trillion. And you know, here's a way to think of 20 parts per trillion. Fill this space full of sand, okay? That's a trillion pieces of sand. Now pull out 20 grains. That's what we're talking about, all right? And the talk is, and we have been told, that there's expectation that the EPA, by the end of this year, as a Christmas present, was what was referred to us by, you know, one of the leaders over at MSEP, will bring it down to four parts per trillion, four grains of sand in this room, out of this room of sand, okay? That's going to be nationwide. That's going to be quite interesting. If you sample the, if you take a sample and you, you have to, you have to control the, we have to control the samples now, right? And there's custody, chain of custody, process, cleaning, all that sort of stuff. If someone has taken a sample of the water for a PFAS test, they're, they're not supposed to have had their clothes dried with dryer sheets. They're not supposed to have hairspray. They're not supposed to, you know, washed with certain types of soap. I mean, it's phenomenal just to get the right sample done properly. So it's not, it's not, we're not going to be alone in the challenge. The good thing is that challenge for a system like Millville, MES, is that we, we have three years to have to really deal with it, okay? And so that leads us to the last slide, which is, you know, all of the types of alternatives to deal with the system beyond what we're doing, depending on what, what happens with it, all right? So let's say we can't, we see total trihalomethanes as a continuing problem. That's a, that's a chemical that evaporates into the atmosphere. And so one solution is an aerator in the big tank that allows it, just spins it around like in a fish tank. And that stuff goes away, then you're going to comply. We don't expect that we're going to have problems because we believe we're, that the system is going to be, is under control and will remain under control. But those are possibilities. It's not a very costly solution and it's doable. Activated carbon has been on the table as a discussion item. Those would be fairly, you know, good-sized cylinders into a space that has no remaining floor space. And those, the media would probably need to be changed frequently. We don't, but it can deal with PFAS. So we, you know, longer term, we know PFAS is going to be a challenge. Permanganate was a solution that we had considered previously. That's not on the table today, but particularly because of the, we don't think it's necessary. The chlorine is now under good management. But the permanganate also has the risk of pink water and, you know,
Hot, pink.
Very ugly, you know? It's not a safety issue, but it's certainly not a PR, it's got a PR challenge.
The coffee cup right there, pink. I'm not kidding.
Yeah. So, so that's a challenge. There's also ion exchange. I don't quite know what that is. You know, I'll do my best to understand stuff. And we are in discussions with Oxbridge for a water connection. We have a memorandum of agreement that's, or of understanding that says we're going to work together towards trying to find that solution. You know, we're the tail of that big dog and that big dog has a lot of money they have to spend to deal with things that they may not spend if they can't find the resources. And we separately might be in receipt of some grant monies from EPA through DEP. The amount of that is unknown. The maximum amount is, could be a million dollars. We have engineering currently going to evaluate, you know, preliminary design of the system to bring the water from Oxbridge, assuming Oxbridge can bring the water up to where it is. And it's an eight-inch pipe that would have to come from there to the school, maybe some offshoots available to folks if they want to pay for it, so they're customers of Oxbridge Water. But current thinking is that's going to be at least two and a half million bucks. But we don't really know, the engineering, that the McClure engineer is going to, is currently doing will be the key telling factor for us. And so I don't know where that's all going to wind up. And again, Oxbridge has to do significant additions to their system to even be able to bring the water up, okay? So we're a bit dependent there. And that's multiple years out. So we still have to keep doing the water properly and we think we've got a handle on. So I hope that gives you a reasonable update. I try not to be too long.
Yes, the last thing that I'll just add on slide, the very last slide. So the first four points are like an additional Plan B, should they be needed? Should we find that any of the halocytic acid, the trihalomethanes, if they start to go in a direction that we don't like, then we have kind of an alternative Plan B. And as Peter mentioned, we're just going to be ahead of the curve on the PFAS. We'll probably have three years to comply with that, but we'd like to take care of that sooner than later. And then the real Plan B, provided things continue the way we expect, would be the connection to the water system. And speaking with MSEP, they said, well, what if I gave you a million? I'm like, what if you gave us two? So it's, we'll see where she, where we land with that money. I let her know that more is better because we have some money in our stabilization, which we could allocate, and then maybe a smaller debt exclusion to the town. So we let her know that as much money that she can throw our way is greatly appreciated.
Is, I correct in understanding that Oxbridge also applied for that PFAS grant?
Yes. So, and that actually works to our advantage, that both systems are trying to solve a PFAS problem. And then the other advantage for us is that we have, so we are, the other advantage is we have manganese, iron and PFAS, and those are the three things that they're giving out grants for. So they're looking for grants to solve a manganese issue or an iron issue or PFAS issue. And we have all three. And we're one of the considered disadvantaged community as well.
And that is applied for?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Peter put in for that in September. That was the like one and a half page kind of overview. And then we've connected Chris McClure on the drawings and she's been, MSEP's been involved, aware of that progress as well.
And maybe you don't know the answer to this, but is Oxbridge applied just on the PFAS? Do they have other water issues that...
I believe they have, I'm not sure.
Yeah, so they're, they're...
Everyone's going to have the PFAS issue.
Yes.
Probably.
As, as Jennifer said, EPA and DEP like the idea of two communities. They're solving one, two problems with one sort of review of the system. And for Oxbridge, their challenge is they're trying to bring greater volume of water up to that area of, you know, at the end of Kempton Road, basically, up that way because they are looking forward to additional development. So they want to expand the capacity of water. They need to expand capacity of fire suppression water up there. And so it's going to require a pump station and a big tank and it's, next thing you know, they're into multi-millions to do what they need to do. An element of it, and supplemental funding is this grant, and it's under the guise of solving the PFAS problem. And they, you know, they're not perfect on PFAS at this stage either.
Anyone else have questions for...
Sounds like you're making great progress.
I think so. We think so, yes. It's under control. It's just manage that chlorine. That's the magic.
It's just time, really. Just keep getting the contest again and again to knock out that first quarter that was so elevated.
So I will ask the question, the elephant in the room.
Yeah.
Do we have, does Millville have a water operator?
Yes.
Yeah.
So what will the status be with Dr. Gulick?
Dr. Gulick will continue to serve us well and won't leave us high and dry. You know, he'll keep us wet. How's that?
Well, he sounded like he wanted to be done.
He does, and we do want to transition and we, we, out. But, and we have a solution for that, we think. But that's still ongoing evolution of negotiations. How's that?
Yeah. Another thing I added, and I, Peter and I talked about this, I think a lot of the issues have been communication. Like Dr. Gulick was never going to be a permanent water operator because, one, he's probably the most expensive water operator based on his credentials and things like that. So he's like, look, I'm just trying to get you to where you take off your training wheels and I'll pass the baton over to someone else. And David Papali, I believe is how you say his last name. So he's been kind of the understudy for Dr. Gulick since August and he's been in there a lot. So he's hoping to kind of take the reins. And then also, you know, we have other options as well.
And McClure Engineering's a key part of the team at this point. And they've signed up and now they're focused because they really were, they're very, they're in high demand and they have great relations with MSEP.
Yeah.
So they know how to work the system, if you will. And so...
Familiar with the processes.
You know, or so...
So you did say we need engineer and operator, so...
Yes.
Yes.
He's actually licensed as an engineer and operator.
And operator.
McClure?
McClure is, yep. And you're allowed to do that.
Yeah.
To have one, one organization.
He's just not ready to commit to it.
So where do you see this going?
Yeah, so I think that it'll be another, at the end of Q1, it would be no more notices. The, the water will be in compliance. Because even if you, so if you look at the data on slide nine, so the 73 and 110, so provided we come in under that on the halocytic acid, and you can see our current numbers are averaging around 30, as Peter mentioned. So to come below 73 and 110, I don't think is going to be challenging. So that will eliminate the need for the halocytic acid communication. And then on the trihalomethane, it needs to be below 57 and 50. And those have also been below that level. It was below, it was at 50. So unless something crazy, I mean, I don't know, I guess unless, I can't imagine what it would change. Because the other thing too, to note is with the trihalomethanes, you can see in July, August, September, it was a little higher than, and as soon as we put in the remote monitoring, it was able to be managed. And that's staying. And Millville paid for that this time. And it's ours and cannot be removed. So that would be March, that we'll have the final...
But it wasn't the notices per se that brought us to this, like, roadblock. The notices have been going home forever. So I, I don't know, I, I'm wondering, like, as a committee for us, it, it was more of a snowball of issues. It wasn't like, okay, we don't have any more notices to send home. I, I think it would be a very unfair of us to say, we don't ever want to see another notice. It's going to happen. It happens. It has happened seven years ago, 14 years ago. I'm realistic with that. But the fact that we stood strong in saying the kids are not drinking it, we're not cooking with it, we're not washing, so, and you are providing the bottled water now.
Yes.
Smaller...
Have been since September.
Yep. Is that something you're willing to continue with the students back in the building?
To provide what?
Bottled water.
So then we shouldn't have fixed it?
No, the water is now drinkable. They can cook with it and drink it.
Sure.
Yeah.
That's what they're saying. So...
Is there something else you wanted to see for data?
Maybe next.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that the operator, Rich, Dr. Gulick, is very confident in the system. In the recent results and even the last six months on, on, on that slide, is a clear indication of that, right? And you throw in the automatic control.
Yeah.
That's going to, that's going to save money because we won't have to pay someone to go out there and turn the dial to turn the chlorine that's being injected up or down because the controller will, if this is happening, then it's going to do this. If that's happening, it does something else. And so that, it's monitoring the chlorine that comes out in that slide of the system, you know, below where it says green sand filter, above the storage tank, that's the key, is monitoring what's going on there to the scientists of the world, right? And if it, if it goes too low, it needs more chlorine going in. If it goes too high, you risk the DBPs and you've got to lower the chlorine that's injected, okay? And if, if it goes too low, you wind up with your, the green sand media, it's like a battery. You've got to keep it charged. You can't let it run all the way down or you're going to have trouble getting it recharged. Next thing you know, what happened, another event happens, okay? And that's what happened last year. They just weren't, you know, it wasn't, that process, that little cycle there wasn't...
Automated.
Automated and attention wasn't, you know, wasn't managed.
Can I add something? So back to, you think your question, Aaron. Back to July, there were four issues that kind of culminated, that came together to, for me to make the request, to make the changes that we did. It was not as much the notices as it was the results, right? The results are it's driving the notices. So they continued not being able to pass a threshold that we needed to. The back and forth over the water, who is going to pay? We're not going to pay. We're not going to provide. We are going to provide. But that's been addressed since not having an operator.
So I don't think the Board of Selectmen ever said we weren't going to provide bottled water.
Yeah, and it's, we don't even have to get into that. There's no point in us going back to that issue. It was...
Fair enough.
I think it was a, it was an issue that you've since addressed. So we can, we can probably leave that there so we don't get in the back and forth. It's not going to be helpful. There was no operator. You know, he had resigned in July. And then the action plan that we had come together around at our meeting in May, that we had discussed, all the different pieces that were going to be put in place, just weren't in place. So I just wanted to go back to, Aaron, to your, to your comment about it wasn't just notices, it was these other things.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to kind of put those issues back on the table because that was what was led to that, led to the recommendation.
So what were the four, so we can kind of tick them off?
Yeah, it was the results and the notices. It was the water and the back and forth of who was going to pay. We're not going to pay. It's your responsibility. No, it's our responsibility, that kind of stuff. The operator issue.
It's done.
Yep, the operator and then the action plan that we had discussed in our joint meeting with DEP.
Well, the corrective action plan is what you're referring to, which...
So those are the things that led to the...
Is there, is there a corrective action plan now or is it...
Yeah, it's been revised just to say, continue on doing this, you know, careful...
And that's what is on...
And that's been put into DEP.
Approved with DEP.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
Yeah, those were some of the issues at the time. The bottled water was being disputed by the, Mr. Caruso with the DEP.
The need for it.
No, the responsibilities to supply it. You can, all this can be witnessed right on either Selectmen's meeting in Millville or Mill, meetings here.
But definitely water under the bridge. It has been supplied to the office staff.
Well, right, but to the superintendent's point, it wasn't just notifications and...
So I, I know, I would love to go water under the bridge. Peter questioned that. If you watched the 45 seconds after Peter's comment, I said, Peter, Mary Jude Pigsley from MSEP said, we're paying for the water we're paying for.
That's right.
He said, understood.
Yeah, no, no.
So the Board of Selectmen never disputed it.
I just credited the Board of Selectmen for not making that, that comment. I, I gave credit where credit...
I want to make it very clear.
Oh, no, I was very clear. It wasn't the Board of Selectmen, it was the town administrator challenging the authority of the DEP.
And, and to be clear...
And if I can, if I may, because I, everyone else has had the floor. And I, unfortunately, Mr. Gulick is not here tonight to answer for his comments that he had made, I think it was on December 4th, regarding the decisions of this committee, the administration. And essentially, and, and poor choice of words, to the chairwoman of the Board of Selectmen in Millville as well, as well as Mary Jude Pigsley at the DEP, challenging all of our decisions. Unfortunately, he's not here tonight, of course, to, to, to respond to some of the comments he made. But that type of, you know, to challenge, to take pride in to, to, you know, disrespecting, for lack of a better word, members of the DEP, and to take pride disrespecting this body who made decisions based on the information that we had at the time, from, at which Mr. Gulick, sorry, yeah, Mr. Gulick stated, we had bad intel. We, our intel was from the... We, we, our intel was from the water provider, the water operator for Millville for 18 years, the Massachusetts DEP, who was, you know, was, was here, who was advising us. And there's plenty of documentation to go back and forth that we, you know, we have an obligation to protect, as we all agree, and we all did the right job, to protect the interests of the students, the children, in, in that, in that building. And, and we made the right decision. Dr. Gullik questioned that, and, and he made it a point that he brought Millville's water up in, in a seminar, whatever he was at in Cincinnati, which no one really cares in Cincinnati, what's going on in the town of Millville. And, and that type of commentary is the very thing that will hold this process up and, and the back and forth. We, this school committee, in my opinion, I'll speak for myself, just wanted results. That's all. We just wanted clean, safe drinking water for the students of, in the, in the, in the, personnel in, in that building. That's all we asked for. The revelation that came out on December 4th from one of the members of the Millville Board of Selectmen was, now we know that we're responsible for the water system. Well, all of their predecessors since 1992 on that board knew they were responsible, and the town of Millville has spent over $2 million over those 30 years on that water system. So I, I appreciate the hard work that Ms. Gill and the board is doing on that. I don't appreciate your, the guy, Mr. Gullik, although, you know, he may be the smartest guy in any room he's in, insulting the people that are trying to work with you. And I would have loved to have him here this evening, and I appreciate this committee coming up to us and giving us an update. But keep in mind, not one of us here that I know of has a water license or water operators. So this is great information, but before I were to move forward on any of this, I'd want to hear from the DEP and someone that's qualified and certified to give us where we should be moving forward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Sure. And I was just going to point out that Dr. Gullik did still point out during, I think you just said December 4th. That even Springfield isn't providing water. He, the, it's a well-known argument that he, he, and his information is being passed to Peter, does not feel that that ever should have happened. So I think, you know, we're all a little hurt from that, you know, from him, and, and keep pressing it, like Dan just said. We made our decisions based on the best interests of the students.
If I may just add, Madam Chair, the town of Millville are the operators, the Mass DEP are the regulators. The operators will never beat the regulators. They make the rules, they, the regulators make the rules, they expect the operator to follow the rules. So.
Which is exactly why whatever Mass DEP tells us to do.
I understand, and I was giving you full credit.
I've offered kidneys and everything, like, whatever she wants.
And you were, you know, in that meeting, he, he did state that, you know, you know, now you're playing along, more or less. No, you're doing your job, and I appreciate that, you know? And, because you have been, you have been that link between keeping the district informed and speaking with the DEP, and I really do appreciate that.
Thank you. I think that it's better to try to be collaborative. I don't think I've always met that goal, just even personally, with this situation, but it's just, it's just easier. I, I can't do it by myself. I'd love to say I can, but I, and then I, because then I could fix it and it would be done, but I can't. I mean, I need every, I need everyone's help, I need everyone to work together. I need to work on better communication at times, so it's, just, just trying to fix it, and I find that being collaborative is better.
Be clear, none of that commentary had anything to do with the Millville Board of Selectmen. It was just what was presented to the Millville Board of Selectmen on the 4th.
Yeah, it was, it was interesting for everybody.
I should say, the opinions presented.
I mean, he even mentioned that he doesn't have a good working relationship with DEP. So I think for the betterment of Millville, it might be best to have a different water operator.
When we mentioned that we had signed McClure Engineering, Mass DEP was very supportive of that. So we're, we feel good about the direction we're making. But I do, just, I will speak a little bit in his defense. Our water operator resigned on Wednesday, he was there on Friday to help us, and we really had no one else. So that was very helpful. There are other things that may not have been, but that, I can't thank him enough for doing that and working with us this whole time. We wouldn't be here today if he hadn't done that work. There are other things that, you know, maybe you're not willing to tolerate, I am willing to tolerate a little bit, just because the work has been so good.
And if I may add, I don't know, the, the name of that engineering firm, I don't know if there's any relation, but I know that our advisor, our, our engineer in the town of Blackstone has the same last name, works for a company. You know, he works for Weston and Sampson, but if there's any relation or anything, if it may be the same person, he's a phenomenal.
Great.
Yeah, so that.
It's already a good omen.
Yeah.
Any other concerns, questions, comments about the, the water for Millville? We have another part of our, of course.
One question. So right now, the test results are great, everything's looking good. We're treating 3,000 gallons of water.
Yep.
How many gallons a day is the school using right now?
I don't.
When I run the water every morning for 45 minutes, I have like five horses.
Thank you.
How many gallons are we using?
I don't know what the water rate.
Hundreds, you know, not much. Yeah, hundreds of gallons.
Yeah, so my concern is, when we bring that team back up to 7,000 gallons to get the students back in that building, are we going back to ground zero?
No, that's why we have the automated closed-loop system, so it'll be able to adjust quickly, like the, yeah, that's. And that's one of the reasons for the, I wrote it down, because I, the programmable logic controller will help with that.
The test system will be in place, more testing.
When are we putting that in place, Peter?
Uh, I, I don't have a date, I don't have a quote yet, but we'll see, soon.
ASAP.
Just a concern, I don't, I don't want the students back.
We share the concern.
Yeah.
We share the concern. We know that's going to be a challenge, but it's my understanding that managing the system with little demand has been more difficult than were it managed for normal usage. But, but yes, you're right.
Madam Chair, if I can add to that, I think that was actually addressed by Dr. Gullik at your meeting with the automated system, because he, he pointed out that the usage is low now and the, that automated, you know, they're going to work it, you know, it may change as, as the usage uses, as, as the usage goes up.
Correct, yeah.
And that, that system will, yeah, that system will have its own integrated alarm systems and everything else that.
Yeah, and again, we keep that chlorine, manage that chlorine, that's what the story is.
Right. So that was, that would be part of the, the whole process. It's auto, like Blackstone, it's all automated alarm systems and, and, you know, and it fires in the treatment as it calls for it, and everything has to be documented. Like you said, it's, it's a whole, it's a whole process.
But thanks for your help in all this. We mentioned you.
That's right.
Couldn't have done it without you.
It's a lovely building, you're wonderful.
Need things?
We have on our agenda the November 2023 survey.
Oh, the, I didn't realize that the town of Millville was going to be here when I asked us to put on the, there was a survey, and, and I questioned the, on the, if, whether or not you guys still wanted to use the school. I think now that may be moot because we're, but.
Yeah, well, so, well, this gets to, so I, of course, want them to use the school. I want us to use the school. I think most people want to use the school, but I think seeing that data point one way or the other would be helpful in that we have too much school capacity. I think we all know that. If, and if it's helpful to the school budget, and therefore helpful to the Millville budget to close a building, I would be absolutely willing to work with that, with the school committee on that. I prefer it's not the MES for sulfur shoes, but I do want to ask the question, like, what, what do people think? So just to get, it's another data point.
So when is that survey going out?
Um, probably in January. We're going to talk about it again on Monday. So, and we're probably going to have two versions of the survey. One's going to be more like, what do you think of this? Do you, like, use of school building, things like that? And there's going to be one that's a little bit more prescriptive, and I'm sad that I'm sitting next to Andrew, I hope he doesn't get violent, on like override kinds of questions. Andrew doesn't like over. And say, you know, if we were to do an override for this much money for the fire, we have this, if we were to do an override this much for police, so that's, so there'll be kind of two versions of the survey, one mostly financial based and one kind of more general questions.
I, I guess I feel like if the school is on there, it should be a collaborative, like, why put that? I think, if I remember correctly, and I haven't caught every single meeting since the summer, but I do remember when you started talking about the survey, Andrew said he wanted that question on. Like, would people want to take that building offline, or?
Yeah.
I don't think it was, it was associated to the water issue and, and that, when he mentioned it.
No, it was just.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew. But.
You don't remember asking that?
I don't, I don't think I asked that, because I was.
No, I think it was.
I was always on the fact that we had to have a building in each town.
But I, I mean.
That's right.
So I don't think I would have asked that question, I don't remember asking that, but I could be wrong, I guess.
Do you remember how it became a, a topic on the survey, Jennifer?
I think it was, I don't remember, like, it might have been even me. Like, I think that I would want to know, what, what does the town, like, what does the people in town think? Do you want to have this, do you need this to be as part of the school district? Or do you feel very strongly that it should be part of the school district?
So, I, I mean, we've never even talked about this, so, but the way the regional agreement is written, it wouldn't actually be a town's choice. However, if you're going to put that out there, when I've listened and I've not been in your meeting to like, say, oh, I have a question, um, I think you need to put it all out there with the, what we have had to talk about during the water situation, which is the MSBA boiler project money.
Yeah.
Like, why put that question on a survey to our townspeople and then, and have them say, yeah, I think it shouldn't be a school anymore, and, oh, by the way, we're, you're going to owe $2 million to.
Yeah.
The MSBA if we take that building back. Oh, and the school doesn't want to give it back. But, so I don't know, I, I think if you're going to include that on a survey to our taxpayers, it has to have a lot more information.
Okay.
Not just a, do you want to take, do you think we should not use it anymore? That's, it's a little too broad.
Feel that's helpful feedback, I think.
But if I could, Madam Chair? I'm looking forward to meeting with Jason on, on Monday, right? And he, he's good at giving a heads up about where he sees the next budget year. And so, you know, from my perspective, one of the first things I'm going to be asking about, and I don't want to show any cards, if you will, until, until we meet, but will be an understanding of the facility usage versus enrollment, because clearly, you know, I've always believed you have, you, just as she described, there, you've got overcapacity. And there's cost to that. There's cost to what's going on with MES right now with, you know, a dozen people in there, and I don't know how the heat works, but, you know, buildings heated, you know, all that kind of stuff. And, and I'm not saying that to be difficult, I'm just trying to be realistic, particularly if you have other budget challenges, which I suspect you do, and we'll be talking about those. So it's a problem that the town, you know, I'm the budget meister for the town under the bylaws before these, these folks get something. And that process involves understanding, you know, what folks need. And, and so we're, we're all in a, gonna face a challenge for probably both communities based on at least what I understood from some pre, or highlights of previews last year, talking about the future. So we know that we're going to be up against it, and how can we all figure out how to get a, some solution to ease the pain, but still meet the, you know, the, the needs to get, you know, I wish some of those guys were still here to protect my back when, you know, select, you know, Mr. Keefe's talking. I'm just kidding.
That's fine, you can bring as many people as you like.
But you, you know what I'm saying? So I, we're, we'll be talking about it. I look forward to meeting you Monday, and I appreciate that we, you know, are going to do that.
And that's all well and fine, but we are also in a process for our feasibility study to direct us, I mean, we can talk budget, but space, we, we have to let that process play out for, for our facilities and for what's recommended on, on where we go, you know? We definitely don't disagree that we have too much space.
Yes.
But I think it's great that we're in the feasibility process.
Before you make any big moves, I understand, yeah, I get you.
Can I just add two things to that? I think it'd be important to mention, there's a process piece to this, and then there's just a factual piece regarding staffing and all of that that I just want to quickly highlight. The process part, in our regional agreement, if we're going to make any permanent moves there, unless there's an issue like, you know, you know, we had of the summer, where, you know, we, the school committee decides a building is, you know, unusable, there needs to be a public hearing, discussion, and a vote prior to January 1st of the year that changes would take place. So in other words, if we're going to make changes for September, that, you know, the school committee decides that they want to, you know, not use a particular building, you want to downsize or rightsize the actual number of schools, that all needs to be done before, before that. And honestly, there are two, there were two really complicated pieces to this issue if folks are running, like, well, why haven't we done that yet? So there, here are the two issues. We have an MSBA project, which is a wonderful thing, by the way, but we had that issue even a year ago before we were accepted into the pipeline that could have impacted this as far as reorganization and consolidation. If you remember, we actually had public meetings about consolidating schools. We had multiple discussions with the community and needed to pause based on community feedback, based on MSBA, not sure, not being sure if we were getting accepted into their pipeline. So that, that really impacted last year for our ability, or the school committee's ability to make that decision. So January 1 came and went. And then we hit the issue with the water situation, which we all know about. And so now we're in a situation that is also prickly, because, right, we didn't, we're not using the building currently for all the issues we've discussed and all the great things you're trying to do to fix that. And so now we're kind of trying to figure out, like, where do we go next with that? But January 1st is going to come and go, right? And so we have these, we have these issues that we're, you know, trying to work through. I think the other thing that's important to note, and it was mentioned in the public comment or Go to Welfare section of the meeting on December 4th, one of the residents had a conversation about our budget just keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger, we've downsized our staff. So Jennifer, I think I sent you the numbers last year, and I'm happy to bring those back out and update them. So as our, and by the way, our enrollment is stabilized off. We are stabilized, we're over 1,500 again, and that's kind of where we're holding, which is, which is good. I think we have a good handle on that. It's back up from where it was after COVID. But even with that, our, our FTEs have continued to decrease over time. So yes, utilities, yes, contractual obligations, yes, health insurance, all the things, right? You know, Peter, and you're, you're in.
Less funding from.
Right, and the MLC that has to keep getting increased, that the state's pushing on. So it looks like big, bad school district, it isn't us, it's not the school committee. They've worked really hard to make sure that our FTE, our full-time staff, matches the enrollment that we have, and the facts show that. Our, our numbers of teachers and staff members have decreased year after year after year. So I just want to reference that to our friends and families watching at home that are coming to your meeting saying, yeah, but their budget keeps getting bigger and bigger and bigger and bigger. Yeah, but it's not because of our staff. We've actually changed our staff size with our enrollment year over year. So I just wanted to clarify that piece, because I think that's going to come up in this next budget cycle.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Sure.
And I'm glad you're here for this, because I asked us to be put on the agenda to ask the superintendent to get an update on what, what this meant. And so there is, I've had this discussion, like, for the last year and a half with a couple of people in Blackstone who want the Kennedy School back, just a, a couple of people. And, and, and so everything that the superintendent and the chairwoman has stated is correct. There would need to be an amendment, and politically, I could tell you why, there would need to be amendment, other than the, having the hearing and everything else, to the, the regional agreement, because Blackstone or Millville are not gonna, well, either town that closes, for example, if you close, you got the elementary school back and we're still running out of Blackstone, well, well, great, come on in, but we're not paying the capital costs alone anymore. You're gonna, you're gonna want, we're gonna want you to pay your share based on the enrollment, and you would want the same thing. That's the way it would be fair and equitable for both communities, because they're town-owned buildings, you know? So, that would, so, I, I'm not, I think the discussion should be had with Millville, with Blackstone, and, you know, with the leadership, you know, the superintendent, the superintendent and the town administrators and, or the board of selectmen's and the school committee for that type of conversation. As Aaron said, there's a lot going on right now, but we all know there's a, we have space.
Oh, sure.
We have space, and, and there is a cost associated with that additional space. But then you have the ownership of the buildings. And we both know, we, I mean, I've been around long enough to, to, to know that if we were to close the Kennedy School and everybody went to Millville, it would take about a year or so before people would say, whoa, in Millville, wait, wait, wait a minute now. How come we're paying all the capital costs, you know? And, and we would do the same thing in Blackstone. It's, it's just human nature, and it's, it's good business, good representation of the people. So, that, you know, that's one ask, that's one end of things that would, would have to be worked out in an amendment to the agreement. And then, of course, the law, you know, of course, the loans are, on the MSBA have to be, you know, the people need to definitely, and Blackstone would have the same issue with the roof and boiler and windows and, and such, so. But it's not, I was just curious of how the, what was going on with that.
Well, in our packet, is this what the survey rough draft is right now? It says.
So, that was like.
Would you support removing the Millville Elementary School from the school district and having that building available for other uses by the town? So, I just, I think putting it out there like this is to all of the town, is this going to the town?
No, that's just, that was when we had one survey, so I'm, like I said, I'd be breaking it up into two.
Okay. But stating, asking this question to any taxpayer, I think is just, I mean, it could go so many directions. We're in the process of trying to build a high school, right? So, you put this out here now, and then, a year and a half from now, someone remembers answering this question, and then all of a sudden, like, we want to build a school, and we're going to close the school, and they're going, they'll connect, that has nothing to do with the other piece. Along with that, it says, would you support it, meaning someone's asking for that support. So, I, I just feel that it would need to be worded very differently.
Okay. If you want to send me an email how you would word it, that would be great, if you don't mind.
Well, I would take it off, but that's.
Okay.
If you really want to know.
That's also an option.
I don't know why we're asking that question right now. That would be my.
Yeah, I'm wondering, well, I wonder how.
It says, and use, for uses by the town.
Yep, because that's what we would do.
Would it, I guess, you know, that's maybe conversations that.
So, we've had some of those conversations in capital, um, year, a year ago or so.
Yeah, yeah. And, and the issues that Mr. Keefe raised are critical ones.
Yeah, like the MSB loan.
They're important to be resolved if you get there, that's right.
Yeah, would be an issue, and then.
Yes.
As a taxpayer, that's.
Yeah.
That's right.
Yeah, no, that's a super big deal.
Could I also just say one thing, which is a good thing, okay? Regarding the excess capacity, if you, that really served you well during COVID.
Yeah.
You did an outstanding job of having students in person learning because you had the extra space. That was huge.
Absolutely. We were able to be full-time for our younger.
Yeah, and it was done well.
Even another great reason not to try to evict us.
It feels like an eviction.
Oh, don't worry, we've got 19 years left on our lease.
You're getting to the point where you're gonna say, don't let the door hit you on the way out here.
I guess, are there any other questions on the water situation? Just to close on that, make sure you've answered all your questions? Is there anything else? Because, Aaron, you asked the question, would we continue to provide bottled water? Like, I, I don't think we need to do that, but what, do you have, like, what you would like to see?
So, I guess it's a bigger conversation, because as everybody knows, the kids have not drank that water since, for five years. So, putting them back in there, this looks good, this, people say, but the decision was made by our standing superintendent five years ago, like, we're not, he, his exact words, we're not doing this. We're not getting a notice, and it's, like, a quarter, a quarter behind, and the kids drank the water, we turned it on, we turned it off, we stopped, we stopped, and we were providing that water. So, I don't know when it changed with Mary Jude. I don't know when she thought you guys were buying it. It was always us. I, I didn't get that in-depth with her on a conversation about it. You have, it has transitioned to you, but for a much smaller, you know, group of, of people working.
Can I ask, it was a directive from Mary Jude for the bottled water?
In May.
Yeah.
And so.
In May.
And so, what was the criteria to lift that directive?
I guess we would have to clarify that.
Yeah.
But I.
What kind of assurances can we get that, we have sports teams using the gym now, can they drink the water? So, we'd like assurance.
But they weren't drinking it a year ago, Chuck. We weren't, we didn't.
But, you know, like, they're telling us it's good now, what, we need that, you know, a professional, you know, tell us.
Well, if we have the monthly numbers, like, we could.
We need more than that. You need MSDEP to tell us that you don't, you no longer.
Need to provide.
Mary Jude, in an email, said, Town of Millville must provide.
Bottled water.
Bottled water. It wasn't an order, you know, they have official order process, and, and when query.
We didn't want to push that.
She said, I'll give you an order if you want.
I know, like.
You can, you know, so we just let it be and follow her order. So, she would have to lift that.
So.
Yeah.
You've applied for the grant for the bigger.
Yes.
Do you know a timeframe on that?
That's like a three-year thing.
Three years until it would be finished, or you would know if you're in that process?
No, so there, there, she's expecting to be allocating money, like.
Right.
Soon.
So, you, so you get the call tomorrow, allocated $2 million, because that's what you asked for.
We're thoughtful.
And you know, like, this is where we're going, right? So, we're, obviously, we'd meet again, and we'd have to, but where does that put us next June? We know this project is just this far away, but what are we going to be able to do to get back there for next school year? And, you know, I know it's been mentioned about bulk water, and then that was shot down totally.
Yeah.
By Mary Jude.
By, by MSDEP.
But the bottles would still be okay with her, right? Is it because the long-term plan is the pipeline? Bottled water until then? Or is there going to be a point where this is, like, this is something we're all going to have to talk about?
Why do we fix it if we're still doing bottled water?
Well, it's, oh, it's been consistently being monitored, it's forever been, but we, we have not been using the water.
Well, because we have had consistent results. And the results are quarterly averages, and when we get them, the kids have already been drinking.
You need to have water still provided until you have a track record and documentation that the water is safe to drink.
Yeah.
Okay. So, you're looking for a lift from MSDEP?
Even, even at that point, we have water provided, let's say we have a track record of a few quarters, it still only takes one quarter to fall off of that track record that we're, that we're in the rears of providing, because we, okay, well, we have one, three quarters that are good, let's start giving the kids the water again, and then, quarter later, it's back to no good, oh, but we've been giving them the water. So, I think until we have a viable set way of providing water, whether it's at Uxbridge or whatever, you know, way that we're gonna give the kids water, the bottled water has to be the way, because it sounds like DEP has not lifted that. So, I don't know any other.
Again, until they lift it, we must provide.
Bottled water.
Bottle water to the users at MES, right?
Right.
But I will quote Mary Jude, I will quote her in a conversation we had on October 2nd, Jen and I had a Zoom meeting with her, and she said, anybody saying that the water is not being safe is not accurate. That's just a direct quote from Mary Jude Pigson. So, it's, it's, that's contrary to what she said at the May 15th meeting. I don't want to get into that spitting contest, we don't want to get into any spitting contests with DEP, I just point that out. Again, I point out, if you look at the slides regarding what the, you know, the real health effects, the consumption, half a gallon a day, every day, for 70 years, for the haloacetic acids. I mean, do you drink Diet Coke? You know? Stuff for.
Do we hire our own expert to test the water or to evaluate?
That's not, it's DEP, they call the shots.
So, we, um.
And this, by the way, is on our website, if anybody wanted to get a real good copy of it or see it closely, it's on the town website.
So, yes, my concern with the direction of this conversation now is, like, we worked really hard on the, to fix the water and spent a lot of money to do this. And it's like, well, will you still provide bottled water? Well, we started providing bottled water in September, so then why move the students at all? If the issue was bottled water, we're providing it. And now, it's like, well, will you continue to provide bottled water? But then we fixed the water. So, this direction I find concerning, because we provided bottled water since beginning of the school year.
But we're, we're about to embark in our budget process, and we do need to know if the kids are going to be in that building, or just for the way our budget goes, right? So, I think the question is bigger than, will you continue to provide it? It's, if we make the decision that, yes, the trend looks good, we know there's a three-year plan for the pipeline, but if there's a problem, what is it going to take to, or, or are you going to provide it if it's not lifted for the 400 students versus the 16 to 20 staff that are in the building?
If we, if Mary Jude tells us to provide bottled water to the school, we will provide bottled water to the school. We took a vote on that on August 14th, and that's, we will provide bottled water as long as she tells us to. And if she lifts it and brings it back, we'll provide bottled water again.
So, that makes sense to me. I think we actually, to Scott's point, is we need to really, these numbers look good, but I think we need to get that capacity up and have those numbers tested to prove that it can be maintained.
The only way you can do that is with students.
Yeah. I know, is there, there's no way, I mean, I think we just have to run the water.
Get around the water.
So, we do that.
It's an awful waste of water, but it has to be tested.
No, me and my children went in one day and turned on all the faucets, and saw Dr. DeFalcro there, um, which they thought was fun, actually, to run around the school and know when it was in there.
Community service hours.
But, yeah, I mean, so I don't know how to do that. I guess, um, the other option, and I don't really want to say this out loud, but I will, is to maybe turn the water on and keep the capacity maybe for September with the students, and we provide bottled water for September as like a transitionary thing. We can talk about that, but that's an idea, is we could have a transitionary period.
Do we need, as a committee, need to know before that?
Well, before September?
Yeah, I mean.
Well, I mean, we could.
We'd have to have everything moved back into Millville to do that. And then, I guess, I guess worst case is if it fails, the water.
We'd do the transitionary period, yeah.
I don't know, it's.
So, I mean.
Big conversation.
You guys are working on it, obviously, you're working diligently on it. You have a new water operator that's just starting. And so, you're following the DEP mandate, or the recommendation, until further notice. You have several months of testing in the positive, in favorable testing. So, I mean, we, we, we can't, we don't do anything until the DEP works it out with their water operators and, and gives us, and gives them a clean bill of health, um, for a, you know, whatever, how many quarters or whatever it is, so that we see fit, that we can comfortably, um.
So, what kind of communication look for MSDEP? So, if Mary Jude sent a letter saying it's safe for the students to be back in the building?
Well, I, the.
Well, she never said it wasn't.
Exactly.
We, we knew that. It was our decision.
I said that in the, in the meeting, yep.
She didn't lift the order for the bottled water, so.
She has not lifted.
Drink it. No, so, well, so.
It's our safety.
I guess I'd want to know from her, like, where, where does this need to be quarterly for that bottled water piece to be lifted?
Yeah, I did mean to call her today, but I was, and ask that specific question, but.
We have a little bit of time.
I think.
For our process.
It's kind of, it's a bit premature, like, we're not gonna have any decision on anything tonight or anything like that on this, it's, it's.
No, but it's going to be something we talk about through our budget process.
I, I understand that, but, like, hypothetical, until that, until the DEP gives a clean bill of health, and the fact that they're still under the direction to provide bottled water is, is where we are at, where we are right now. I mean, the, the, like, the, if I can ask, the, like, you say the hypothetical $2 million from, from the DEP to connect, is that to connect with Uxbridge?
Yes.
Okay. And Uxbridge are gonna need several million to get what they need to get up, just not to even start the process to connect to Millville. So, that's a five, 10-year process.
I don't know how long it is. I don't think it's, you know, I think it's three to five. I think that's probably a reasonable timeframe, right?
Drill in new wells and.
No, they're not, they, they have tons of capacity.
If they just run a pipeline, yeah, then that's one.
But it's still, but even still, the challenge might be, and I think the number that, realistically, the maximum number we might expect from DEP by way of EPA or the other way around, is a million bucks on a two and a half to $4 million project. And so, then, we're dealing with, will the community vote to fund, you know, finance the balance? And that's in the framework of the things you're looking to do, and there are other things going on. We have a town hall challenge, right? So, it's asking a lot of taxpayers who don't have a lot of resources. And I am the chair of the capital committee, I don't want to be, but I am.
He loves it.
And, um, you know, I don't know how I'd even vote on a financing portion, like, I'll work diligently to get things happening with Uxbridge, but when it comes to where I have to vote as a capital committee member, right? I don't know how I'd vote on that. You understand?
I understand.
You know, it's a challenge, because I don't know what's right for the, the taxpayers. And that's how I would have to vote.
And it's a bigger conversation with the buildings. Both Blackstone, certain, you know, people from Blackstone would like more space, and same thing in Millville, so it's, it's a, and we have a feasibility study on the table, which, uh, you know, we're, we'd still have a, you know, a space surplus at the, I would imagine, you know, if we get what we're looking for there. So, it's a, it's a, it's a community conversa, it's a regional conversation. You gotta go back to the drawing board like we did 55 years ago, right?
Okay, so I took an action to ask Mary Jude when she would lift the bottled water requirement. Is that, to ask?
More of where you need to be in your, right? There's someone behind us.
I just have one question, I think it was on the prior slide, because most of our three, five-year plans out, I think it's on the magnesium mythologies, it's been a lot of chemistry, magnesium.
That thing?
Yeah, so I was just wondering, when we start talking three, five, 10 years out, the magnesium over the last two years seemed to go from 1.1 to up to 1.5. Does that trajectory put us over the 2.0 criteria when we're talking further out? Or is there plans to keep that in the chat?
Uh, I, I don't know how to answer your question, okay? The orange dots are.
The raw water.
The raw water, right? The blue dots are the treated water, okay?
So, you can see as the orange dots vary, the blue triangle still stays steady under that.
Yeah, so that.
Blue is what we're measuring against the two.
Right, blue is where we need to be. The red line at the bottom is where we need to be, you see the blue triangles after.
Yeah, so the triangles are the, after the filter, the green sand filter, okay?
All right, well.
Got me on that.
Definitely appreciate you being here tonight. Definitely appreciate you being here tonight and catching up.
Thank you.
The DEP, we want to know that the kids can drink the water that we can cook with it. You know, that's what we want to know. And that it's sustainable and it's monitored with that new system.
Yep.
Yeah, to me, that's unclear to me as well, because if you look at the current, the water as is right now, everything's testing below where it needs to be. So can you cook with it now? Or is it based on the notice? Like, I don't know what the thing. Yeah. So we need to know that. Done. Perfect.
The criteria. That's what I like. What was the criteria to remove that? What did you guys have to meet? Did they give you, this is what needs to be done before we remove the bottled water?
That's fair question.
That's, that's, I think that will clarify it for all of them.
There was a process to that, too. They were put on warning. And then it required the corrective action plan. And then so maybe we just need to hear what the end of that process is.
Yep. Okay, sounds good.
All right.
See you Monday.
Anything else for us refer?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn at 7:32.
I've seen two Millville Selectmen's meetings this.
Thank you.
We'll definitely be in touch for other.
Merry Christmas. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Yeah, Merry Christmas and happy holiday.
All right. So moving on, we have declassification of executive session minutes. And that is for August 25th, September 14th, and October 23rd. And there's a motion to approve the declassification of executive session minutes as presented for August 25th, September 14th, and October 23rd. Motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Carrie. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. Thank you. And we have an MSBA update.
I will let Dr. DeFalcro.
Yeah, no problem. So just a couple of just quick things. I wanted to share that we had a really great meeting with the school building committee in November. Well, I don't know, the last few weeks have been flying. So it was mid-November. And we are meeting again mid-January. I think it's January 18th. That's because right now, things are fairly quiet. As everyone is aware, we will be moved into modules two and three at the next MSBA board meeting, which is February 26th. In the meantime, we've had a few deliverables that we've had to share with MSBA, sort of strange things, like they asked us for our budget, for our OPM and our architects. And we wouldn't know that because we haven't hired them yet. So they asked us to kind of figure it out. So we did our best work, went back and looked at all the spreadsheets and found projects similar to our size and submitted an estimated cost for that. And we, you know, was shared with us that if we are really off, they will tell us. They haven't told us that yet. So I think we're okay. But said not to worry that if we needed to make changes, they, it was fine. They just wanted to get a sense on what we were thinking the costs would be. And we got our data from them. So it was kind of interesting how that process worked. But that's it. And we are waiting right now on our final enrollment number from MSBA. We had our enrollment meeting. There was some back and forth over whether the numbers were accurate or not. They have quite an extensive formula that they use to come up with that. We pushed back a bit and requested a higher enrollment, submitted updated enrollment numbers, and we're waiting to hear back from the enrollment team. Once that happens and we land on a number, which will actually pull the school building committee together, that we thought we would have had it by now, but it's fine. I think they're, you know, busy too. We'll pull the school building committee together to, you know, kind of agree to the number. And then we'll sign off on the enrollment number to MSBA. Then that will trigger on their end of putting together feasibility cost agreement with MSBA. And then we go into the February meeting, and then we actually will be able to go out to bid for an OPM on the project. It is looking like we will hopefully, fingers crossed, we will be able to onboard an OPM somewhere, we're thinking between August and September, somewhere in that kind of timeframe. Just the process moves painfully slow. So that's where things are at with MSBA. We're pleased everything's in. Everything has been, you know, ahead of schedule, which is great. And now we're just, it's kind of like a hurry up and wait situation. The other item in your packet is a retroactive vote that this committee needs to make. It's simply semantics. It just has to follow the language that MSBA wants the school committee to use regarding the capital stabilization. We submitted the one that the school committee did. I think it was in June. And their legal team came back and said, would you mind revoting using this language? So that language is in front of you. So we'll need a motion on that.
Would anyone like to read the motion?
Do we have this? Was this on a previous agenda that we passed over?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we waited till they confirmed the language.
I was going to recommend that we wait until after we pass the Blackstone Town Meeting. I don't know if I have it.
I'll volunteer.
I didn't know if you did. I don't mind doing it. I thought maybe you.
I was just doing a good stretch.
How about it?
Motion that the Blackstone Millville Regional School Committee hereby appropriates the amount of $500,000 from the School District Capital Stabilization Fund for the purpose of paying costs of feasibility study for the Blackstone Millville Regional High School Building Project located at 175 Lincoln Street, Blackstone, Mass. 01504. This includes all school building, I'm sorry, school costs, excuse me. This includes all costs incidental and related thereto the study said amount to be expended under the direction of the school building committee. The district is authorized to make this appropriation in accordance with and under MGL Section 71, Section 16G and a half, the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. The district acknowledges that the Massachusetts School Building Authority's MSBA's grant program is a non-entitlement discretionary program based on need as determined by the MSBA. And any costs the district incurs in excess of any grant approved by and received from the MSBA shall be the sole responsibility of the district, provided further that the amount appropriated pursuant to this vote shall be reduced by any grant amount set forth in the feasibility study agreement that may be executed between the district and the MSBA.
Motion made by Tara. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara L. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you. I think, can we ask, our Unibank rep for the wording on this first time?
We did. We sent it to, so what was interesting was we sent it to our Unibank rep. We sent it to our legal counsel. We sent it to their legal counsel and everybody signed off.
Next time we just go to MSBA.
And then their legal counsel said, oh, we wanted to do different language.
Can I, can I ask the, because this motion is on the MSBA website. But it does say the total amount to be expended on the feasibility studies. I was wondering, I thought this would have to be a million dollars.
This is the money we allocate.
I understand. But in the, in, there was specific where it was the total, the total amount that was voted on. And.
I mean, this is exactly what they sent us. So I think we're good now.
Okay. Because there's another $500,000 that's coming in for the study.
Yeah, they approved this language, knowing that it was a million dollars on the, yeah.
I understand because it says it's capital stabilization.
Yes.
But it was weird. And when I read it before the last meeting, actually, when this was on, I was going to bring it up before the meeting. And.
All right. All right. Moving on to policy review, I will pass this over to Matt, who is the chair of our policy subcommittee. But everyone had been sent in email our current policies that were being reviewed by the subcommittees. So Matt, if you just want to give us an overview, and then I think we have it on here as actual required.
Yeah, thank you. So the, a few of these are just, there's two of these on here where we're just combining two existing policies that we have on the books already. So nothing really changes there except for the fact that they're, they're just kind of, you know, combining and kind of tidying up. Our first one, though, is the civil rights complaint policy for child nutrition programs. So this one, when Jason and I met, we, I, I think we struggled a little bit on this one on what we understood it to be, whether it was for employees or for the actual student body. I think we settled that it was, it was a little bit of A, a little bit of B.
Yeah, it was everybody.
Yeah. So this basically just says that everyone has the ability and won't be discriminated against based on any, any sort of, whatever you call it, the race, color, national origin, all that kind of stuff. So that they wouldn't be discriminated based on that for access to, to nutrition programs. So really, I think it just kind of puts it in stone that, you know, should there be any question on that, they, they wouldn't be discriminated against. Now, the curriculum development, development and adoption, this is one of the combinations. So it took IGA and IGD and added them together. Again, there was nothing new. It was just the two separate policies put together.
So what is outlined in red?
Correct. Yeah. So what you see outlined in red is the, so the curriculum development would have been IGA and curriculum adoption would have been IGD. So the red is the IGD and that is what's, what's added into IGA.
And if I can just jump in one piece, if that's okay, Matt. The, you'll notice the second paragraph is not underlined while the others are underlined. That's because MASC had recommended striking that language and the policy subcommittee felt strongly that we should leave it in. It should be the expectation that the committee would expect the faculty administration to regularly evaluate the curriculum. MASC had recommended taking that out. I'm not sure for what reason, but I know Matt and Tara and Aaron had recommended that we leave that in. That should be an expectation. That's the only reason it's not underlined.
So again, there really is no changes to those two policies together. Development and dissemination of procedures. Again, this is CHA and CHC, which are combined again. So no change to our actual policy, other than less pages, less paragraphs. Less pages, not less paragraphs. Our next one is IHAMA. So this one, we did change a little bit, too. We, I felt strongly, and I know that we agreed as a subcommittee, that as it stands right now, and with the upcoming framework that DESI is going to be laying out for sexual education, that parents have as much information as possible and that it's not a come get it sort of idea. So they would, they would be sent the materials and the, excuse me, the curriculum prior to that. And then they all always have the option to opt out, which was already in the, in the policy. And then, so ILD. So this is actually a new policy that's going to be added into our policy from MASC. What you'll see here is this is student submission to educational surveys and research. Basically, again, giving our student body and our parents the ability to understand what, what they're being surveyed on. And it kind of lays a groundwork of what the Department of Education sees as, you know, maybe you can help me out there with, you know, what their actual survey, you know, the surveys can be. So.
Yeah. I, I think the kind of the headline to this is that any survey that would be sent out to our students would be shared with families first, so that the families can actually see. And a lot of the principals do that now anyways, but this would actually memorialize it. So if there's a survey that's going out to our students on anything, it would go to families first, so the families can actually see the survey. And then there would be an opt out, you know, which we, which again, we have now. So it just would, it would memorialize that process.
Right. So we had the opt out for the, for the prior one. So this was actually a new policy. This, we didn't have any, any framework around this at all.
Right.
So, you know, students could be surveyed for any number of things without parental notification. I know, as a parent, I know that some of the, some of the principals do send it out, which is great. But now it just kind of, it's, it's set in stone, like Jason says. So it just gives the parents, I think this gives the parents more ability to review the materials and have more control over what their children are being exposed to.
Do you want to read the motion, Matt, for accepting changes to policies?
So I move to accept the changes in policies EF, IGA slash IGD, CHA slash CHC, IHAMA, ILD, and approve said policies.
Okay, motion made by Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tara S. Any discussion on the policies updates?
Just for the record, the motion was written EF. It's actually EFE. Make sure that's cleaned up.
Change that.
Any other discussion or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Unanimous. Thank you.
Now that we voted, can I, I'm going to be cautious how I approach this because I did get a call from a parent this week and actually reminded me, reading the, the committee wishes to be informed, though. And I'm going to be, especially with the nature of things in the world today, I, they sent me a message they had received about the, the ADL in the middle school and their concerns. And I, when I looked back at the meeting, when we discussed this with the building principals, I think it was the high school principal said that the, the book was, you know, the, the curriculum was that big, but we only do about six things. And, and I think it was maybe Mr. Dutton or Mr. Catalano asked to see that before that was approved. Was that done?
Yes, I sent it to everybody.
Oh, we did?
Yep, via email. I sent you a link to the full curriculum.
Okay.
That Friday.
Unfortunately, I, you know, me and my emails, I just.
It is in there if you look at, search weekly update, which you'll have many, and then find the one.
I do, I do check.
Yeah, find the one that's just after that meeting and you'll have a link to it.
Okay. And just, I just, I just would, I just wanted to follow up on that, just because the committee did have a discussion at that time a bit. There was, it was questioned. And so that not everybody, I mean, I'd always check my emails, but not everybody watches the, the meetings. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to make sure that we had covered that ground.
Definitely. And I know that the principals are happy to meet with any parent that has questions on, on anything like this.
Fair enough.
Okay. Are we okay to move on to the report of the superintendent?
All right. Good evening again. Just, we're going to start with Ms. Fallis, who's going to do an overview of our NEASK or New England Association of Schools and Colleges update. And then if, if it would be okay, I would like to take, if the committee would approve, the update on grade eight and nine tutoring out of order, just so Mary could go next and she can go home.
Of course.
Welcome, Ms. Fallis.
Hello, everyone. So trying to summarize a very long process into a few slides was a little challenging. So I'm going to do my best to explain this. And first, Tara, thank you very much for showing solidarity.
Aye.
My students dared me to show up, including some children over there, dared me to come in my, in our festive sweater, not ugly sweater. So thank you. I saw it. I was very excited. So we are part of the NEASK organization, which has over 700 elementary, middle, and high school as part of it. It is an organization that looks to make sure that we are meeting high standards. They have standards for technical schools. They credit technical schools. They credit international schools and independent schools, as well as our public schools. This is a 10-year process, give or take, mostly give, because it's never gone in, in the full 10 years. The standards that you're looking at now on this first slide were the old standards. One of the nice things is that NEASK took a lot of feedback, particularly around 2016 to 2018, about what they were doing and how their process was. It was very expensive to hold, to host a visit. You often had 10 to 15 members. You had to pay for those members to be here for three nights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So they have streamlined the process. So I'm going to talk first about what the standards were. This was obviously pre-me in 2015. But there was a, a large, very large report. It was released to the public. I'm sure you haven't seen it, but in a long time, if ever. But I'm just going to give you the overview. There is a 10-year process with COVID. It is now 12 years. So we started in 2015. There was the site visit. There was an overall rating of, of, of a warning for the school. You'll see on the next slide, a plethora of things have been happening that we have done to improve everything from curriculum to the physical plant. There was a two-year report that my predecessor completed. And just in this past August, I completed the five-year report, going through all of the, the updates. What happens is they send me. What happens is they send me recommendations and ask for updates in what have we done so far and provide documentation. So I spent a good chunk of my time in July, making June and July, making sure that that was all set. And you will see, they're very pleased with where we are. In the fall of 2024, we will start our, we will begin our self-study. That will have consist of me getting a team together and attending a two-day workshop in Boston, where they're going to go through all of the new standards and what they're looking for and how the how the process has changed since they had the visit in 2014. And then finally, we will have the the NEASK visit in 2027 for the formal piece. On slide four, you have that in your packets. I mean, there's just, oh, geez. Sorry, I'm not good at this. I'm really good at my computer, but it's not linked to yours, so I apologize. So there's the timeline there for those of you at home to see where we are. We're currently on slot three, and we'll be moving to our self-study next. These are all of the things, not even all of them. This is what I could fit on one slide, for the amount of work that has been done even past 2015. So I put kind of like the physical layout on one side, for the most part, and all of the curriculum and instruction pieces on the other. You know, thinking about this NEASK visit and report happened before COVID, you know, so the technology, we were way ahead of the technology piece and with our one-to-one initiative, which made everything that much easier to roll out and deal with that hiccup, if we want to call that. The classrooms have all the technology that we need. There is sufficient funding. There is curriculum revision. There's data cycles in place. All of these things that were not solidified in the 2015 report are there. They're very happy with this. The only thing that they cite is the physical plant, the physical, we can't help with ADA, and I can't help with the asbestos. So with any other of those issues, we won't have a problem.
Jill, can I jump on that really quick? Because I think it's important to note, too, in your packets is the letter from NEASK to to Jill dated November 7, 2023. And I just want to bring everyone's attention to a statement that was made here, that while the report described many positive aspects of the school, the commission was pleased to learn of the following. And the things that they're pleased to learn of the following goes on like almost the third through the second page. So this is just a testament to the work that's been done over the years at the high school to address the issues in the 2015 report. And so a huge shout out to our high school team for taking on all of this work and work that isn't even listed in here, that Jill's mentioning that they're doing. So I just wanted to bring your attention to that because when you see all of these, you know, things from development of safety protocols and safety compliance, I mean, you know how much work we do in that space, all the way to the instructional work and the professional development and the instructional leadership team, the data cycles, and all the things that we come and share with the school committee on a regular basis. NEASK highlighted that as something to, you know, to share back to Jill, saying, thank you for sharing these things specifically. And there's a lot of things there. So I just wanted to call that out. I'm sorry, Jill, to interrupt.
That's fine. And then the, this is the changes. So they're kind of streamlining the process, so going from seven standards to five. They're, for the most part, they are just mixing things. So the, instead of having a curriculum, an instruction, and an assessment standard, they've got the the learning together. You're still going to look at the resources. You're going to look at the community support. You're going to look at how many nurses in the library and all of that stuff. So I did put a link in there. If anybody wants to know more, I can send you the slides live and you can go and peruse. The also, the the way that they're going to do this is also going to change. It's really about helping the schools build a a growth plan, kind of like our Blueprint 2.0, but even it's even going further than three years. It's looking at a 10-year because it is a decennial visit. So we're really excited to work on that. I came from where I came from, from the other, my other district. I was the lead chair. I know a lot about this. I actually do believe in this process because I saw real change come out of it that needed to happen. One of the things that we have already done, have established, and not only established with us, but through the district, and I'm really proud of, is the portrait of a graduate, the portrait of a learner. That is something that has changed with the new standards. Again, I was aware of that. We knew that that was happening. A number of things that we have been doing now will help us in the future when we go to do this. So it's not going to be, we're, and it's not even because of this visit. It's just good for kids and good for all of us. And so we're already ahead of the game. I'm very excited about about the process and looking forward to to begin it. It's it's daunting. It's a lot of work, but it's great work to reflect on already what we're doing. So you'll be hearing a lot more from me.
And our accredited high school will certainly remain accredited without question.
And, you know, I do anticipate maybe that date getting pushed a year, depending on what the status of the bulldozers and backhoes.
And that would show
I'm sending that out into the world.
In good faith, work towards the ADA and the asbestos.
Correct. Yes, they would not, they would not do a visit in the middle of a building, in the middle of the building project. They would wait.
And that was one of the first, that's their first bullet they highlighted on their report to us, is acceptance into the Mass School Building Authority to make needed upgrades to the school building. So a big shout out to our communities, too, for passing that feasibility.
And that's even, yes, and that's even passed
So important.
Before even we, the votes came, so.
Good stuff.
Great.
Keep going.
I mean, I, I just want to point out to, in the very last page of the letter to Jill, it has been conversation in the past. It has not been recently. But, you know, when there were budget issues and budget cuts, we, as a committee, have to keep in mind that these items in the back page are things that keep us accredited. There was a time where we cut the media, library media, and we knew that it was going to affect our accreditation. But it was a financial decision. So just, I know this is the first time some of you are seeing this and seeing the NEASK information. This page is important, just always, I think, for high school.
Anytime there's a change in anything
Yeah.
in staffing, grade configuration, if we dropped our advisory program, any, anything of substance, and that list is longer, I have to report on that.
Yeah.
You said this is like a 10-year process?
So you, yes, from from start to finish, yep.
When does it start all over again?
So once we have our, our visit, we'll be in a three-year, they usually do the three years when you're really getting to the thick of things. So after we take, after we have the, I believe it's in December of next, next December, we'll do the seminar to tell us what we need to do. We'll start formulating our committees. We'll have five committees. All of the teachers will be on that. More than likely, that will be a lot of our professional development, as our faculty meetings will be put towards this in looking and examining. And we do a self-study. So we're going to dive into every substandard that they have, and the teachers are going to provide evidence. Evidence mostly in the fact of like, at least for the first three standards, student work. So the student work will be here. When the visit actually happens, they meet with everybody. Like they, the the visit can be, the school committee, superintendent, principal, they'll meet with kids, they'll meet with parents. There's a really large piece and component. There used to be a very large survey, it's Anticut Survey, which is like 75 questions, that they would ask the community. You have to do the community, the teachers, and the students, and that was a lot of the data that they would get. I don't know where that is in that component because that was one of the complaints. It was like $1,500 to do that. It's a lot of money to to go through this. So I'm curious to see it, where that, some of that data comes from and and where we're going to go with that. But I, the, as far as the foundations and the curriculum and instruction and the assessment problem, I'm, I'm not intimidated at all.
So once they give us a stamp that we're accredited?
It's 10 more years, it's 10 more years cycle. Yep.
The whole process starts, all the work.
Yep. So if it happens in 2017, I mean, sorry, 2027, then in 2029, there'll be the two-year, then the five-year, and then the self-study at the seven-year mark, and it starts all over again. And by then, maybe they'll change something else. I don't know. But this is the third accreditation. I think this will be my last, but that's okay.
All right. Thank you for that. Okay.
Very rigorous process, but so important. We'll definitely be ready.
It's also something we have to budget for. As she just said, there are expenses in in the years that we're in that part of the cycle, we, it is part of our budget process, too.
But they've touched that, so that's good.
Thanks, Jill. Mary, thanks for your patience. Mary's going to give the committee just a very brief update on where we are with the grades eight and nine tutoring, because we made some really nice progress.
Yeah.
And we've already been up and running a bit. So Mary, thanks so much.
So it is up and running for the math. We had, we have a, we were lucky enough to hire a math-certified tutor. So she's certified in math. She's been tutoring for 13 years. So she'll be working with our grade eight, nine, and 10 right now. She started, she started this week in the middle school. We were unable to find anyone, unfortunately, for in-person tutoring. So we went with a tutoring company that does, that specializes in in high-impact tutoring. So the way that will work is the, they'll have a live virtual person, the same tutor, who's, who's also a certified educator. They'll have the, it'll be in groups of three. And they will, they'll have the same tutor all the time, and this will happen twice a week for 30 minutes every week for 15 weeks. So that will start after vacation. Well, actually, I should say at the end of January.
The ELA tutoring, the math tutoring.
I'm sorry, yes, that's the ELA tutoring. And then we were lucky enough to also find out yesterday that we, we received part of a high-impact tutoring grant for math as well from DESI. So we'll be starting that soon for grade four and grade eight.
And how are the kids being moved into that process?
For that one? For all of them? For the way that the high school and the middle school did it was they looked at their star scores. So we based it on star scores. And that will probably, I've, I've spoken with Jenny, with Dr. Remkar, and also with 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 Mary Jufry here. And that's pretty much the way that they'll do it here as well.
Sorry, so are they just going by only star? Not, not like if a student is struggling in the class currently?
So that's a really good question. So so the way that the high-impact tutoring works is that let's say four or five kids didn't get the homework that day. Because it's the, because the tutor is right into the classroom, the tutor can, the teacher can have the tutor pull those kids. So if, and also, if they didn't understand, if like they took a test or they weren't, weren't understanding a concept, they can split the class in half. And because she's certified, that's, that's perfect.
So is the teacher making those decisions?
The classroom teacher will be making the decision.
So we're trying a bit of a different model. So we're doing the, we're doing the virtual tutoring for ELA. We're doing the in-person tuning for math. We're actually able to expand because we did write for that grant. So we're able to add
More kids together.
Fourth grade. And then we discussed utilizing the, you know, some different, you know, types of what's available to us for eighth graders with a different group of kids and seeing, you know, now we're, now we're in this place, we have a good problem.
Yes.
We have a lot of opportunity, which is, which is great.
So and even though it's a virtual, even though it's a virtual tutor, every week, the teachers, like the classroom teachers, as well as the principals and myself, will get a report. So if if certain kids are excelling, they'll get pulled, and they can move other kids in as well. So it's not like that, if that, it's, it's not set in stone. We have room to move.
And it's not taking their electives?
No.
I don't want parents worried that their kid's going to miss art for, like, that's not how this works. It's actually embedded in the class.
Yes.
You can see a really, with the math interventions at the high school, you can see really good examples of this.
Yes.
Just, you know, visiting classrooms. Jill and I were visiting one recently, and we just saw it in real time. There was an entrance ticket. The kids are doing a quick, you know, equation. The the interventionist grabbed those. She was rifling through them. She saw the kids that didn't need them, she pulled the kids right away. And she just re-taught that skill like right in the moment. That's what we want.
Right.
So that we actually don't have this skill gap going like this, so they're not missing core work to make up work. And actually, it's real time in the moment. So that's the model we're moving towards, which should be very helpful.
Any questions?
I'm just happy to hear it. I know you're saying lots of opportunity, but we needed it unfortunately years ago. So I'm glad that it's amply available right now.
And hopefully we'll see the benefit soon.
Right.
So years ago, I am sorry, I have to comment on that now. Because years ago, we put in the MTSS model. We've done the acceleration camps. We've done, this is the next piece, which is the classroom-invented tutoring.
I understand.
I just
But unfortunately, no, I didn't mean that, any, any negativity towards you.
No, no, no.
In our past few years of MCAS and the way it has gone, unfortunately, in the middle school
Right.
Since COVID, I'm not blaming it on COVID.
No, no, no.
But we have needed
Sure.
more support than we could find. And it's nice to hear that we have ample opportunity.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Mary.
Next up, I want to walk through our FY25 budget forecast, and I'm just going to grab the, I have a very short slide deck. Oh, no, it's okay. I can you have on the screen here.
Very short. The first page is numbered. Oh, the second one is. Then you stop.
Oh, they're moved.
19 is very short.
Yes, I will.
No, you're fine. It's just the beginning, people.
Yes, this is our entry into FY25.
Kickoff.
That's right. This is the kickoff. And so tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what's framing our budget for fiscal year 25, what some of those drivers are, what some of the concerns are, and some of the needs, and how it's all connected back to, of course, our district improvement strategy and our blueprint. A couple of things I think that are important to use to kind of frame out the the discussion around FY25, and I, and we're going to keep coming back to this. Actually, Aaron, I'm glad you said what you just said because it's one of the main main drivers here is really looking at those end-of-year results, the focus, you know, that we need to put on, the continued focus that we need to put on, on learning. I think two other pieces that are really important to mention is the school committee feedback from last year through the evaluation, through my evaluation process, but obviously ongoing feedback in general regarding community concerns and issues and making sure that we're being really responsive to that. And of course, our surveys, as recent as the survey that we sent to our fall athletic families and really taking the time to pour through those results. You're going to see evidence of all of these things in tonight's discussion. So what's driving our budget? I mentioned earlier tonight, and I know as the committee is aware, and I'm sure our community by now, our enrollment has stabilized. We're just over 1,500 students, which is great. So we are back up. We were, again, as you recall, last year, we were down around 1,450. So we are back up just over the 1,500 marker. We are in our third year of our blueprint, which is really interesting next year. Time moves very quickly. Our student demographic is still hovering around 50% high-needs, which, again, for those who may not remember, it's any combination of economically disadvantaged, which was the old free and reduced lunch, with being an English-language learner and/or being a student with special needs. So half of our students fit into this, into the student group. Also, a hot topic of this evening's discussion earlier was this idea of school structure, configurations. You know, I definitely think this is going to be a conversation that's going to come up as we're moving through the budget cycle. To what degree, to how, I don't know. But I, this is certainly something I think that will, will remain at least a topic of conversation.[1780.68] will, will remain, at least a topic of conversation. Again, that focus on minimizing those non-academic barriers, we were lucky enough this year to be awarded a grant of $100,000 to continue to, to address those issues. I know Jill and her team is hard at work and on putting together the model for that, but we'll remain focused on that, very much focused on strengthening learning for all students, that tier-one instruction. That's the general teaching and learning that happens in the classroom every day for all kids. That will remain very much a focus of our work and should. Next year, we will be looking to implement a revised science curriculum. So we are in our second round of revisions for science. We started six years ago. So believe it or not, that cycle has been fully completed and we are now in our second cycle, which in a lot of ways is a lighter lift because we've been through it, you know, and in some cases we may just be quarter-turning some of the curriculum and filling in some of the gaps. But we'll be looking forward in January to hearing from our curriculum subcommittee on science on that. And of course, next year, we're going to be reviewing our literacy curriculum, which is again, pretty amazing that we're already back up to that to making sure that we have the right reading and writing structures and materials in place for our staff and our students. So we have those pieces to look forward to come fiscal year 25. And then you're going to see in a couple of slides, some ideas around strengthening and improving our student experience in grade six through 12. I think we need to put a significant focus there. Any of the survey data, and I know the committee has poured through it like I have and Jill has, and our principals have, any of the survey data we get back from parents has been pretty consistent. Elementary schools, fantastic. PK through five, everything's on, on track. We hit the middle school and people start to get nervous. We start to get more feedback about, you know, this is not a good experience, this has not been a good experience, that kind of thing, whether it's in the classroom or on the fields. And then, you know, it changes a bit when you get to high school, of course, through school choice and all of those things. But the idea here is that we need to get laser-focused on our students' grade six through 12 in a very focused manner. And so we'll talk about some thoughts around that. Some other factors, these are the ones that are not always the, you know, the most fun to talk about, but have significant impact on our budget. Health insurance costs. Not only are we seeing an increase, and we'll get that percentage increase at the end of January from MIA in terms of the overall cost, but we're going to and have been seeing a health insurance usage increase. So more folks in our district are signing up for our benefits. And that's great that we can provide those benefits to our employees and that's important. But we're seeing an increased use in that. What we're seeing a decrease in is the actual claims being made. So more people are signing up, but less people are having significant issues that are driving up the claims. So it's actually a good thing. We just had a meeting with MIA recently. Our private school and collaborative tuitions are increasing. We did get the increase, at least a tentative increase, the board trustees for BIKO or Bi County Collaborative have not voted yet, but the increase that they are projecting the maximum being is 4%. So they're actually hoping it's going to be less. So that's good. You might recall we had like a 12% increase, which I did not vote for, but I lost that vote and it went up anyway.
Have we raised the rent?
No.
Okay.
Facilities needs, again asbestos management, short-term capital projects, contractual obligations. The minimum local contributions always, we know is a waiting game. We don't know what that's going to look like until we get the, the state numbers. Governor's numbers will be out in January, I think it's January 24th, which is great. Our utility costs are absolutely through the roof. They are coming in over 30% as far as what the increases are expected for next fiscal year. So you'll see when we start to get into the real weeds of the budget in January, that our projected costs for our utilities are over 30%. And that's what's frankly being quoted by our different vendors. And we have four or five different vendors that we use for our energy. So we are diversified as much as we can for as small as we are. But we're dealing with propane, we're dealing with gas, we're dealing with oil, we're dealing with solar, and we're dealing with good old electric, you know, energy that's coming in a more traditional route. So we have a variety of ways that we're getting our utilities in. And then something that is really important to mention, our budget offsets are going to change significantly. So you might recall last year, we took in about $1.8 million in revenue, I say took in loosely, used is probably a better term. $500,000 of that was through the school committee, their, the school committee's use of excess and efficiency funds. Our SR3 dollars, this was in our last year of that. We've been really smart about how we've used that, by the way, and, and, you know, not, you know, renewing different positions and things that we were committed to not based on that number. So I think we've done a really nice job with that. We're not, we're not seeing that fiscal cliff that probably a lot of districts are, you know, that got a million dollars and hired 16 people. And now that all those 16 people are here and they're like, now what do we do? We haven't done that. Over time, we've either built them in the budget or we've not renewed the position. We held firm on our commitment to the communities on that and not just hiring tons and tons of people and then saying, okay, now figure it out towns. So actually think that we'll be in decent shape, but that's a loss of revenue, any way, any way you slice that. Also, in FY24 is our circuit breaker dollars to the tune of $880,000. That is a lot of circuit breaker money to offset and we're, you know, we're just not going to have that amount again. So these are factors we have to think about, you know, when we get into the weeds of what we need, hugely important, but we know that the revenue streams coming in to offset the assessments of the towns are going to be really important to evaluate. And these are three big ones at the tune of 1.8 million. Our budget process to date, I won't read through all of these things, but I do want to highlight a couple of important pieces. The second bullet to the bottom, we backed up the timeline of this and the principals and our cost center managers were, were great. I wasn't sure how they were going to respond to this because we actually backed this up like two weeks. That's a lot. It may not sound like a lot, but it is a lot of time when you're putting together your budgets for each of your departments. But that was really important that we had this information sooner than later, particularly in light of our transition in our finance office, so that we have a solid working budget in place. Jill and I have spent hours upon hours going through each individual line of the draft budget that we'll bring in front of the committee at our January 11th meeting, but to make sure that it is in really good shape for the committee to start sinking their teeth And then of course, at the January 11th meeting, we'll start that, we'll start that work with the school committee. So our strategic priorities for FY25, I mentioned this a little bit in some of the pieces about what's driving this year's development of our budget. But looking at that next round of literacy curriculum, what is it going to look like? Again, it could be a few quarter turns, we're not entirely sure yet. Hopefully purchasing and implementing whatever revisions to our science program that we need to do, K through 12. I think we're going to see a significant shift in our internal assessment system and I think we're going to see it move away from STAR. We've been, the assessment committee, which is comprised of coaches and teachers and administrators, has been looking at something called edulastic, which is a very different model and would allow for a lot more flexibility, a lot more of a, how do I say, rigorous type of test, but it's one that we actually can build for our kids based on our standards. And so we're looking at something very different. And believe it or not, it's actually significantly less than what we're paying for STAR. So I actually think that we're going to see that shift. I don't want to get out over my skis or whatever that expression is, I don't ski, but I want to make sure that the committee is aware of that. Again, strengthening and focusing on our SEL work. We do most of this work through grants, as I know the committee knows, but we're going to keep that a focus along, right alongside of our academics, of course. And then two other pieces that are important to mention, our summer programming, we've run the past three or four years all on grants. The budget is typically around $50,000, so the committee will see in the budget this year and ask for that $50,000 so that we can sustain our summer programming. The committee knows that if we build it, they do come. We've been able to fill out all of our programs and this is in addition to the 21st Century program that we run at the complex. As you know, that's $175,000 program annually. That's all paid for through grants that we write through the Department of Education. We write a lot of grants, I know the committee knows that and the community knows that, but we do need to start building some of these pieces in, like summer programming. That should be a staple, it should be what we have. And then staffing, this tends to get the most airtime and it should, it's, you know, these tend to be the most costly pieces. So there were two requests. One that I want to start with, I think is incredibly important for a multitude of reasons. And I'm not 100% sure that we're going to land exactly on this title and I know that's a little risky because there's a title out there now, once it's out there, it's kind of out there. But we are going to be looking for a 12-month position that is framed around a Director of Athletics and Student Life. And that is to address very specifically those grade six through 12 students. Yes, athletics will be a significant piece of this work. We have got to get the athletics department straightened out and really tight as far as communication, scheduling, planning, budgeting. I think we need to move away from this stipended model. However, I think that position needs to do more than that. We talk about engaging students at middle and high school and the importance of doing that. This position needs to be relentlessly focused on creating opportunities for every one of our grade six through 12 students. And that can mean a lot of things through clubs, activities, yes, athletics without question, intramurals, running summer session sports programs, running, you know, vacation intramural tournaments. I think we could absolutely blow this up in an incredibly powerful way for our community. And frankly, use it as a leverage point to get students to stay here by actually having somebody that is permanently dedicated to enriching their learning experience through a variety of extracurricular and athletic opportunities. And so if you looked at the survey that was sent out to our families in the fall, one of the things that we heard repeatedly in their results was, we need a full-time AD, Athletic Director. If you look back at past budget cycles, I know many of you around the table have talked about this before, and, you know, for, for a variety of reasons, prioritizing other things, you know, it wasn't on the, on the final, you know, kind of list, so to speak. I think we're at a point now where it is a critical position that we're going to need to include in the budget. And then the second is a grade-two classroom teacher. I want to just share, if you look at the overall class sizes for next year that are listed at the bottom, you can see the number of classroom teachers at each grade level and the projected number of students. We rolled all of our enrollment up a year, so you could see what we have. So, you know, the numbers speak for themselves, right, for next year in kindergarten, we would have five teachers with about 105 students. That would range between 20 and 22 students in a classroom. Grade one, again, same thing, five teachers, about 103 students, again, between 20 and 21 students in a classroom. In second grade, we have four teachers and our second-grade classes will have about 25 students with no additional second-grade teacher. That would leave our class sizes at about 25. Is that huge? Necessarily, but it's different than what the other class sizes are across the grade levels. So I wanted you to see that. And then again, in grade three, we have four teachers with 88 students. And I know the committee very well knows of the, kind of the bubbles that we have come through, you know, depending on the kindergarten enrollment and how that works its way through each year. But that would have, fourth, third grade would have four teachers at about 22 students. Fourth grade, six teachers with 116 students would be about 20 to 21 in a class and very similarly for grades five. Again, this is, you know, these are preliminary, these are the addition, you know, the initial, wherever we land on these issues, the committee will obviously decide that as we work our way through. But these were the two additional positions that came forward.
If I may, that, that's like the reason why we changed the regional agreement. I mean, that's, that's as fair as, you know, that's, talk about a fair and equitable like process for every grade, like everybody.
It's right there.
That's right. It's, it's, those are the results. Five years ago, those numbers did not look, six years ago, you know, before you got here, it was 28 in one second-grade class, 14 or 15 of, you know, you know, so it's tremendous that, how it's so balanced.
We had mixed-grade classrooms, remember that? That was, yeah.
Yes.
It's come a long way, yeah.
Yeah, and it went, yeah, so it wasn't fair either way. Like it wasn't fair for the students either, either way. Tremendous results.
Any questions or thought, I know this, this piece tends to get a little more conversation around, so I don't know if there's any other thoughts around.
Is there a job description for the full-time district, district director of athletics and student life?
It is under construction. So we're in the midst of.
That will be implemented.
Yeah, we're in the midst of trying to get together a really good kind of written draft of what that individual would do. So what we, what we needed that position to do is yes, it's got to get all things athletics in place. But again, we're not, you know, we're not a larger system that where that would necessarily be only that as far as a full-time position, but we can really build that out to address all of the feedback we hear and see from our families around, and our students frankly, around opportunity. Our men's leadership group, internships, I mean, there's so many different places that this position can go to be such a value-add to our students in our community. It's actually, it's very exciting.
Yes.
And then just the next steps. Again, the January 11th meeting, which I'm very much looking forward to because we can jump right into the details of the numbers. Cost center manager presentations, January, February, again, the workshop model if the committee still wants to use that structure. Our joint meeting with the boards of selectmen, et cetera, we have to schedule those. The school committee public hearing will be on March 7th and the certification to follow, and then we'll get the budget books on March 8th. And a meeting with the town administrators on Monday in Millville to go over this slide deck and Tuesday, I have the opportunity to meet with our new town administrator.
I got the impression that they're expecting a little more from this.
This is what we usually, yeah.
No, I'm just saying, but he's, I'm like, wait, he's meeting to talk about buildings?
Yeah, no. And the comment to not show card, I mean, these are the cards, everyone sees them. This is where we're at. There's no cards I'm not showing, like this is where we're at right now.
They can expect more, but I don't think the towns are right any, any further ahead than, or even up to where we are in the budget process.
And I'm guessing they want to talk about it.
Of course.
And for those that went through last year's budget cycle, the Google Sheets that we used, that was broken down by Cost Center, that had the main with all of our function codes, the total, the, like all of that, we're going to use that exact same process.
That is my favorite.
So we can use our laptops and, you know, or paper, people for paper, and we can jump right into, like right into the weeds of.
So if someone wants to know how many erases and pencils.
You can see it.
We can see it.
It's there, yeah.
About that.
Yeah. It's there.
Perfect.
And that is.
Used to buy chalk, because I think they wanted to count on chalk.
We do not do chalk. Having an issue with glue sticks, I saw a lot of glue sticks. Does everyone remember the glue stick conversation?
That was Jane and Ruth.
Yeah.
You're not the only one having trouble with glue sticks.
Yeah, that was a whole thing there. And then lastly, under my report, just a brief update on the business office vacancies. We have, we will have two as of January 5th. Our Director of Finance and Operations did resign. Her last day will be January 5th. She is going to Leicester Public Schools for the same position, but a smaller system, much smaller operation as far as a single town, school district. And so she is going to, I think, take a step back and do that level of work instead of the regional, which comes with a lot of other, you know, challenges with retirees and benefits and being your own municipality and having your own bond rating and all the stuff that goes along with, with that. And so we have been very hard at work recruiting, frankly, and interviewing candidates. So I think the committee knows we will leave a position. So I think the committee knows we will leave a position open before we put the wrong person in it. And so we had a first round of interviews Tuesday. We interviewed three candidates. We moved two of the three candidates to a second round. They will be coming back, the two candidates will be coming back separately this upcoming week to do some additional rounds of interviews with different business office stakeholders and some simulation work. We always put them through, I can share this because it will be different, but the last round, we gave a copy of our audit report to the finalists or candidates, and we asked them to write a response to each of the findings and how they would address it. That was just one. The second was, we provided a copy of our budget book and asked them to summarize what they think we prioritize as a district based on where we allocate our dollars and if they see any efficiencies through that. So there was, it was some, some good work that was done. And then as a, as a next stage, we always bring the finalists, we usually ask the Chair and Vice Chair to meet with the finalists before bringing them to the full school committee. And so we'll see where next week goes, but we also have a round one interview next week as well. So we did phone screening today of a sitting business official. So we're very pleased about that. And we'll be bringing that individual in for an interview next week, around one interview next week as well. So we're getting some nice traction there as a backup, backup plan. And I would bring this to the committee before we did anything, but I did have a conversation with a headhunter that this is what they do, is they go out and they beat the drum and they find candidates. So again, don't want to get over my skis, whatever that, you know, I had it myself, but if need be, I'll come back to the committee if we end up needing to go that route. But we're trying to put as many pokers in the fire as we can. We've advertised on the School Spring Indeed on our website, Facebook, X, formerly known as Twitter, and on the Mass Municipal Association website. Thinking that might be a good place to advertise to. So we advertise in all those places. Once we get that position on board, then we'll take a look at the HR specialist. Our current specialist is leaving with Denise. It was Denise hired her, it was her pick, and they're leaving on the same date. We're going to put that position on pause until we actually hire somebody and figure out whether we want to move forward with that role or do we just want essentially a benefits administrator at a lesser, frankly, a lesser salary. That's about 70% of the position, so it might behoove us as a district to move in that direction, you know, have an HR specialist, but just to focus on benefits, and it actually will be a less expensive position. So we'll go one at a time.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. And will you be delivering the business office?
I will be delivering the business office report. Just a few things on that. First, our personnel report is just to be received and placed on file. That captures the changes across our bargaining units, resignations and retirements and appointments. Our expenditure report is also listed. This was run as of Tuesday morning, so you can see overall, we are still running a very healthy bottom line. We have not yet gotten into the throes of winter, so we'll see what that has to bring as far as overtime and additional costs that come along with snow removal and sanding and all of that. Does anybody have any specific questions on the expenditure report? Again, I referenced, you'll see it if you look at the benefits, the, you can see the insurance employees active, we're about 100,000 in the red. It's just use, we just have more employees that are taking our benefits. But the bottom line is still, we're still running a very healthy bottom line. And it's early, you know, believe it or not. I know we're halfway through, but it's still early as far as budget implementation. In your packet, there is a, a budget analyst stipend request, just to give a quick headline of where, yeah, do you all smell it?
Yeah.
Scott, is everything okay? Do you smell the?
It's like the furnace backfired.
I'm trying to scan it.
You smell that?
Yep.
Just want to make sure everything's okay.
I'm smelling it too in there. I thought like something burnt, like burnt.
Yeah, so do you want to check that out, Scott, and see? Thank you so much. We're glad you're here. In your packet, there is a budget analyst stipend request of 7,500. The way that this was explained was it had come up through some work that was being done already, and I don't doubt that the work's not being done, by the way, but, and that it came through the budget or the finance subcommittee. So I put it forward to the school committee as a whole for a conversation.
Is there anyone on the finance subcommittee that could explain it or?
We had, there was a brief, there was a conversation our last meeting that Denise had explained to us the need for, for some assistance on certain things and assistance that she was getting. And she had recommended a, and you can correct me if I'm a member, an additional stipend for the additional help she was receiving gathering documentation and, and things of that nature. But this was a recommendation made by Denise at the time. And with the recent resignation, I would ask Madam Chair that we pass over this until we fill the position and get a.
Someone else assess.
Yes, to get the recommendation of the new person. So that would make a motion to pass over.
All right, so motion made by Dan to.
Pass over.
Pass over.
Agenda item.
The budget analysis stipend.
I'll second that.
All right, so motion made by Dan and seconded by Carrie, who are both on the finance subcommittee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion?
I do.
Tara?
I just am curious, from Dr. DeFalco's point of view, do you think having this person help in the interim of hiring, would be, would it be worth considering this position still?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question.
Doing the work, right?
That's a really good question. And one of the things I had shared with the, you know, frankly, to the entire business office that are going to have to kind of pitch in now until we find the right fit, if they're doing work above and beyond their regular workday, we should pay them. We don't, people shouldn't be working for free. So I did share with the individuals that have been assisting with this work, you know, to go back and look at the amount of time that you've put in beyond your typical workday that have assisted with this particular function, and let's sit down and look at that. And if you've done extra work, then you should be paid extra. So I'm waiting to see what that looks like. But I do know that in absence of the Director of Finance, you know, that everybody is rolling up their sleeves and doing a little bit of extra work. So, you know, to that point, I think there's other, I think there are ways we can do it in the meantime until we.
Because this stipend was for one individual, but it sounds like the entire office is kind of, multiple people are picking up the slack, right? Or is it?
Yeah, there's a few people that'll be doing some additional, that'll take on some additional responsibilities, that's, that's for sure.
This stipend, in my understanding of that, was not retroactive. This was, if we voted on something, it would have been moving forward, unless I misunderstood the conversation, so. So you're saying, they're saying there was work done previous.
The way it was explained to me was that there, there has been additional work done in the business office as far as budget, like, the kind of the budget analyst responsibilities that are listed here going back into July.
But I have a question about the stipend part of it. It's a Unit C.
Right.
Wouldn't this have to be an MO?
It would have to be discussed with the Unit C, yeah. They, they don't tend to push back on.
Where do we come up with that number?
Yeah, on money from there.
So I, I mean, I would support the motion to pass over.
And just to be clear, the finance subcommittee was, it was brought up, that issue was brought up. I wasn't aware this was going on the agenda for this, for this meeting as a member of the finance subcommittee at the time. I don't know if, no, okay, so we, okay, yeah, so I don't think we requested this.
Oh, okay.
To be on this agenda, not that I was aware of. I did run off to a Selectmen's meeting that night.
No, I don't think we said for it to come on this one night.
No, I didn't think so. Yeah.
I know we, we kind of approved, we agreed to it, so I, maybe we just didn't have it fully expressed that it'd be on the agenda, but we definitely.
I think it would have gone through the superintendent.
Felt like we agreed.
Anyhow, it was missed.
But again, with the changes, with the type of department.
I mean, the last bullet says work with the Director of Finance, we're not even going to have one.
Sure. Fair enough.
Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion on the floor is to pass over the.
Agenda item.
So any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous. All right. So we'll keep it in the background. We're actually entering into negotiations, let's see, so.
Yep. And then the last item is just to accept the Barr Foundation grant of $6,750. And this is a learning excursion trip, is it one pager in your packet, that Mrs. Fowless is going to be doing for the high school, or with the high school, I should say, in a small team, to go out and look at other innovative high school practices that are being done. So we're actually, we're really excited about this opportunity. You might remember she wrote the 1-8 grant as well, and we rewarded that also. And so right now, as we're doing two things, one, hopefully gearing up for a new building project, and two, you know, moving towards our accreditation, she and the leadership team at the, the instructional leadership team at the high school is really trying to find new and different and creative ways to expand the work they're doing there. So they basically want to go out and pound the pavement and see other high schools across different districts.
And this pays for info?
It does, yeah, it does, won't cost a district anything.
So looking for a motion to accept the Barr Foundation grant of $6,750.
So move.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Tyra L. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It's unanimous, thank you.
That's the business office report.
All right. And Scott is here with an update to.
The smell in the room.
The smell in the room.
Did not find anything.
It seems to go a lot of the way.
It's just been that the furnace kicked on and sucked up.
Maybe that's it, because it was freezing a few minutes ago.
Yes, I did skip out and raise the heat a little bit.
Thank you.
Is it better? More comfortable? At the high school, we have two faucets located next to the auditorium, the lavatories over there, that need to be replaced. And in order to do so, the shut-offs are frozen, so we've got to shut the water off to the building. So we're looking to do this over the holiday break. At the same time, we're going to have that pipe repaired down in the all-purpose room.
Oh, from this?
I had mentioned that we've got to shut the water off to the building at the same time, so we'll have that done at the same time, as well as a toilet that's located in the boys' locker room. Unfortunately, all these valves are old and we don't want to force them closed in case we break them and then have to shut the school down. We don't want that. In the all-purpose room, we had a seal, a couple of ceiling tiles collapse during the heavy rains. When I went up there, I noticed there's a cement floor, no asbestos, thank God, and there's cracks in the floor. The water was dripping through the cracks. When I went to the kitchen area up above, the floor was dry, there was no water at all. I'm thinking the water was being blown onto the loading dock and getting into the cascade somewhere over there, a crack in the building. I spoke to Jason, we're going to try some other caulking down, see if that stops it. Again, it's one of those things that, you know, unless it's a heavy rainstorm like that, it doesn't happen. Could also be a drain pipe that runs down through the walls that we can't see. We'll look further into it and see if we stop the caulking and get up on the roof and the roof is dry. We went up there, we cleaned out the drains around it, but I don't think that helped. Fortunately, the rain was stopping at the same time, so the leak stopped as well. Boiler, boiler number two would not fire up. And when I had industrial burner come in, they noticed that the electrodes were not gapped right, and one was actually grounding out. They reset the gap, everything was fine, tried to bill us for it. I fought it because it was part of the summer cleaning that they do. That boiler hasn't ran since the summer. So it wasn't a lot, it was like $175, but still, I felt it was worth arguing because there's no reason that should have happened. It should have gapped them right, it never would have happened. We had Podersky come out yesterday, they cleaned the sewer pump stations located on the ball field, and there's one at Early Village. We have that done twice a year, and usually right before winter in case it gets buried in the snow. So that was done, no problems there. I spread some loom out with the tractor on the, where they throw the javelin, there was a lot of ruts that were made there by National Grid when they had to come out and clear the tree off the power lines. We have some loom left over, so I moved that off of the field and Michelle will need it for other repairs. I felt it was a good time to do it with the heavy rain coming, this way it would wash it into the ruts better. Hopefully, everything's good, pack it down and be ready for spring. I know Chuck likes that. Middle school, we also had a boiler fail. Industrial burner came out again and they found that the air damper wasn't opening and closing like it should, just not allowing the air in to mix with the fuel and ignite, so easy fix. Wednesday, when the custodian arrived at 6:30, he found the building cold, circulator pumps were not running. That was the new VFD drive we had installed last year. He had to reset it, started right back up, everything was fine, but you could hear the pump motors surging. So I called Dynamic back in to look at it, and they found that a transformer had failed in our existing control panel. Transformer was not needed because of the length of the run for the electricity, so they bypassed it, and everything's been running fine ever since. JFK, MES, there were three leaks during the heavy rainstorm we just had. One was in the main corridor by the cafeterias. This one is a roof leak that we are having trouble finding. I think it's coming in through the flashing around one of the rooftop units. We're going to try caulking that, I don't know whether. Couldn't go up there and do it because it was dry at the time, raining at the time, so we'll go up there and check it out. There was one in Jenny Chan's office, Remka. That was coming in through the ductwork as well, so I think it was getting in through maybe an exhaust fan or something. Again, we'll get up, we'll check that one out. And there was one by the drop-off area for the Benning Street side, that one seemed to be coming up through the ground. So again, I'm thinking the water was running down the bank and hitting the building, getting under it and coming up through the slab. So we're going to try caulking that as well and see if that will stop it. This past Sunday, Paul Bacon was doing his building check at MES in Millville, and he found the ceiling tile on the floor was saturated with water. There's a heating unit right above it. The valve was partially, like, when I came in, I turned it maybe an eighth of a turn. This is probably from hot, cold, you know? And there's also a cap on the end of it that was rotted through, so that was allowing the water to drip onto the ceiling tile. There was no damage done other than the ceiling tile, but again, turned the valve, put the cap on, and nothing ever since. Associated elevator came in to do their quarterly check on that elevator, just a maintenance routine check. And the door is making like a slight little grinding noise when it closes. There's a spring on the inside door, doors, two separate doors. So the, if that spring was to break, the outside door would still close, but not the inside door. So. So minor fix, so we're going to get that done as well. And they will be out on the 21st to do the state annual inspection for that elevator. That is all I have. Questions, concerns?
Anything to discuss?
Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Sorry again for the late night.
That's all right.
All right, and we have three use of facility requests, I believe.
I added two to your seat, in front of your seat this evening, because we have a last-minute request coming from the Parks and Rec.
The Blackstone Park and Rec, we have...
And the Knights of Columbus.
Knights of Columbus. And we have...
Blackstone Wolves.
And then you had, in your packet, you had two, I think, right?
Oh, it's two, one.
I think it totaled four.
I had four, but I think I have, I think I copied, it's someone else who's copied.
All right.
No, there's, yeah, there's two, I believe, yes.
Just looking for a motion for the use of facilities present as presented.
So move, Madam Chair.
Motion made by Dan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ted, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes, thank you. And moving on to school committee forum. Anyone have anything you want to share? We didn't have our student reps tonight, so.
I know they have pep rally coming up next week. So next week is Spirit Week at the high school, it's Spirit Week at the middle school as well. Congratulations to the girls varsity basketball team for their first win of the season tonight and their first game.
Was it home or what?
It was away at Western North. They won by three points. It was a good, good way to start the season.
It's commandment, the holidays.
I was just going to say that, yeah. And then tomorrow night at BMR is the, girls varsity plays at 5:15. At 6:15 is the induction into the BMR Athletics Hall of Fame. And then at 7:15 is the boys varsity game. So there'll be lots going on.
Maybe 6:45. I don't know.
Did the girls JV play today?
There is no girls JV team this year.
Oh.
Just a girls varsity and middle school team. Which I believe both middle school teams played yesterday.
And they both won.
Awesome.
Good start.
Any other school committee forum?
I guess I just want to, unfortunately, hop back on the MES decision. It's determined that the kids can't go back there. Do we extend the temporary replacement? Because obviously, the January 1 has to be the, like, a vote to formally change the placement. Would we do a temporary?
If the water issue remains as it, as it is, this committee can, under the regional agreement, decide that the building is not usable, like the committee voted in July. And that vote can happen anytime during the year.
Okay.
If it was a, if it was a permanent move, then that's when we have to do the hearing and the vote before July, January 1st. So you can use that language anytime.
Yeah.
So like, I think to help answer your question, say in April or May, it's, we get full confirmation and we're all good, we can then, as a committee, vote to, as of September 1st, to bring them, bring them back to MES.
Right.
You know, obviously, we would, like, we did it in July for August, September, so we do, because of the circumstances, because this isn't a permanent...
Right.
So we, it's just a temporary, hopefully, a temporary.
But what is the best date to have an answer by, as far as getting the whole process of moving the bill, everything back to the building?
Before the budget's certified.
Yeah, so that's March.
It really is. I mean, at the end of the day, but, but, we did, you know, we did it after.
Right. It can make it happen.
We can do it after again, you know, it's not like, but if you're asking the best date, that's the best date. But it doesn't have to be the only date, because it's not a budgetary thing, but it has implications, that's why I mentioned it.
And I feel like, as a committee, we're going to have to have maybe a workshop, or we're going to have to talk and decide, like, where, where does it need to be for us to make that decision? You know, taking the timeline out of the budget, but what do we need for the safety and security of the kids in that building? And, you know, is, how many quarters of testing is that? How, what kind of water options is that? There's a lot that comes into play. And I guess we kind of need to be on the same page about it, just like we were about taking them out of there. So maybe we're going to have to have some time, whether it's on a regular agenda or we have a separate meeting, but we can talk about that.
Maybe worth adding to January agenda. It kind of goes hand in hand with budget talks, too, right?
I just think it's a really big conversation, so does it deserve its own? And there might be people that want to come and listen and, you know, so do we dedicate a date and a time to that? But we can certainly talk about that.
I would definitely, if we had that meeting, like, to know, hear from, like, a professional as well as, yeah, as well as the, yeah, the regulating authority, just for clarification, like, this is what we, you know, this is what we expect and, and, well, you know, moving forward.
I agree with that.
Because us, we're two boards, we could sit here all night, but none, none of us are experts, you know? We may be at the end of all this, but...
All right. Any other school committee? So we are moving into executive session for the purpose of Chapter 30A, Section 21, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation of the public body, and the chair so declares. And we will not return to open session. I don't know why I just wrote that. I might be a little tired. So roll call into executive session.
Yes.
Yes.
Tyra?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.